Thanks clerks, the number to call if you want to speak to council is one eight three 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 five three eight six one zero. Code one oh six one four four five pounds. We have Elia, sorry Elijah. Sabbath Len here for the rezoning centre of our council, there are no slides, I'm sorry, there are no speakers to this item, so.
Move to wait presentation?
Sure, don't need to have a formal motion, I'll just move along unless anybody objects. Okay, I don't hear any objections, so I'll ask if the applicant team is here to speak to the application.
Mayor Stewart in the chair, councillor Carr. Councillor Dejnová has a personal, has a leave of absence for personal reasons from six to seven, councillor Frye.
Here.
Councillor Swanson?
Here.
Councillor Hardwick is on medical leave, councillor Weed?
Present.
Councillor Boyle?
Present.
Councillor Dominado?
Yes.
Councillor Bly?
Present.
Councillor Kirby Young?
Present.
You've come Mayor Stewart.
Thanks very much clerks, can you just keep an eye on the, on the videos and stuff and let me know if we're in danger of losing form, I'd really appreciate it. Council, we're assuring that all people who participate in the hearings are treated fairly and respectfully and so the language you all use in public hearings should be like respect for all residents with no form of discrimination being acceptable or tol- tolerated. Discriminatory language includes attacks on groups of people and individuals and the Vancouver procedure bylaw prohibits council members, um, the use of words, tones, speakers or gestures. That expresses a negative view of the character of any person or groups of people. Members of the public are expected not to not engage in improper conduct which includes the use of expression that promote hatred or are defamatory. Creation of a safe inclusive environment for the public, council and staff to participate in is all of our responsibility. Members of council may call a point of order if the language used by another councillor during the meeting is not respectful. As chair, I will ask the speaker to modify their speech to ensure they are using respectful language. The public may participate by phone, speaking in person or submitting written comments to council, speakers have five minutes to make their comments. And should indicate whether they are opposed or support the recommendations and if they're a resident of Vancouver. Speakers may only speak once since you follow along on Twitter at Fan City Clerk for any updates on the progress of the meeting so they don't miss their turn to speak. Any comments on agenda items can be submitted writing through our online web form at vancouver.ca forward slash public dash hearing dash comments. And this is also on Twitter, this link. Speakers who are pre-registered with presentations are reminded that the public live feed has a slate today, so we'll help you by if you just say next. We also have a longstanding commitment to equity, diversity and inclusion. To remind council that when addressing speakers and staff, we will avoid using gendered honorifics and instead refer to the person by first name, last name, role and or title. A reminder that the council's role at this public hearing is to be a quasi judicial body, which means council is only to consider the merits of the rezoning application or heritage designation. Council members may ask clarifying questions from speakers, including applicant or technical advice from staff, but should save debate or after the close of the speakers list. After hearing from speakers, council may approve the application, recuse it or refer application back to staff for further consideration. We don't here finish tonight with the items on the list, we'll reconvene. On Thursday, July twenty first at six P M. First item up is the heritage designation on three four seven West Pender Street, Hartley Chambers. I'm just gonna ask first if folks have a conflict of interest, you should declare that now. If not, I'll get the clerk to read the application and summary of correspondence.
This is an application by Char Development Limited to add the Vancouver Heritage Register in the B evaluation. Category and to bring forward for enactment a bylaw for designation of the retained heritage facades as per the draft designation bylaw. Of the existing building at three four seven West Pender Street, also known as Hartley Chambers as protected heritage property. The general manager of planning urban design and sustainability recommends approval, subject to conditions set out in the summary and recommendation of the public hearing agenda. No correspondence has been received for this heritage report and this represents all correspondence received up to four thirty P M today.
Thanks clerks, the number to call if you want to speak to council is one eight three 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 five three eight six one zero. Code one oh six one four four five pounds. We have Elia, sorry Elijah. Sabbath Len here for the rezoning centre of our council, there are no slides, I'm sorry, there are no speakers to this item, so.
Move to wait presentation?
Sure, don't need to have a formal motion, I'll just move along unless anybody objects. Okay, I don't hear any objections, so I'll ask if the applicant team is here to speak to the application.
Mayor Stewart, the application team is here, however, we will waive our presentation.
Okay, thank you so much. Any questions from the council to staff or the applicant team? If you just want to put yourself in the list, councillor Weed, you're up for five minutes to applicant or staff.
Yeah, my question is recognizing the shortage of hotel spaces down there, was there any contemplation about continuing to have hotels of use and adding density to utilize the extra density to make that possible?
Thank you for that question, I'll defer to the applicant, Byron Chard.
Thank you for the question, this was our first consideration of the. Project was to make it into our hotel, we did look to rezone the property. After further consultation with staff, it was decided to remain or to keep it as an office use.
Okay, so there was contemplation to look at a hotel, but now the final plan, you've decided that office use is the best use of the building?
From a financial viability standpoint, to achieve the hotel given the small footprint, to make the efficiency to get enough hotel rooms. We would need to be adding more density than currently contemplating the zone.
Okay, thank you, appreciate it.
Much, councillor Kirby Young, you're up next.
Yeah, thank you, councillor Weed's question was exactly mine, so I'll follow up on that also to the applicant and. The question is this, just for greater clarity, you said it was a financial decision because the additional density wasn't allowed. And we have a significant shortage of hotel rooms, it impacts us in terms of. Use of homes for Airbnb and so on, our hotel rates are really expensive, is it in a nutshell the fact that there wasn't any hotel enabling policy that would give you the density? Would you have done it if you could have, if you could have gotten more density, would you have kept the hotel?
If we could have achieved greater density on the site while respecting the heritage character and a form and. Yes, we would have.
And how much more would you have needed than you are permitted?
I don't have an exact number for you councillor, however, our initial design was roughly. A ten storey building matching the building next to us. While not having any significant setbacks on any side of the site.
You would have needed the, sorry, just to be clear, what you're proposing versus what you would have needed, can you just give us an order of magnitude if it's not exact, I'm just looking for a bit of a. Kind of adjustment position?
Roughly probably about a thirty percent increase.
Just thirty percent, that's, that's all it would have taken?
Correct, we were, we were looking at density, I believe around a seven to eight F S R and we are currently at five point five F S R.
Well, that's really disappointing. To hear that. And at this point, I'm assuming you, because you've gone through that process and those discussions, you want to move ahead as is at this point, I'm guessing?
We would welcome further discussions with staff about the opportunity to rezone to be a hotel. We have been in this process for three years now. Given the challenges of the site with it being a smaller footprint, but we would welcome further conversations with staff for that opportunity.
Okay, thank you, I appreciate the candor about that, thank you.
Thanks, councillor Weed, you're back on for four minutes.
Yeah, I guess my question's to staff, is there an ability to put in a opportunity to go up to an eight F S R? Or what is staff's comments about going up to an eight F S R and what that would do to the public realm or the plan? If we were to allow hotel as one of the land use spaces?
Staff?
Yep, thank you councillor, we, there is not an opportunity to do that tonight. You'd not be able to rezone and add density at the site tonight. If the applicant wishes to proceed. Under tonight's. Heritage designation, we could do that and continue. Separate discussions on a rezoning, but the council cannot rezone the property tonight, hasn't been advertised, hasn't been properly noticed.
Okay, thank you very much, appreciate that.
Councillor Kirby Young?
Yeah, thank you, I'm also gonna follow up on this tenaciously. Because it's something that I think is really important in terms of hotel, could council support the recommendation for the heritage? And would it be kind of within guidelines to give direction to for staff to engage? With the asking about the possibility of continuing hotel use, could we give that direction?
Staff?
Councillor Kirby Young, I think we can do that, we can't really have two active applications. On a property at once, so I'm just gonna pull Yardley. Up front, she's in the, in the back room and have her help me answer these questions, but if council wanted to approve the heritage designation tonight, I think they could. And you could give staff direction to continue working with the applicant, it's not necessary, we, we can certainly do that. There are significant implications for the form of development and shadowing Victory Square on this property and I think that's probably the reason. That we discourage the applicant from going that way, but doesn't hurt to talk, we can certainly run this through the P E P process and bring that forward to council also.
Okay.
Are you satisfied with that councillor Kirby Young or do you want to wait for more explanation?
Uh, no, I'll send, I will send some language into staff along those lines for them to take a look at while we go through the rest of the procedural piece, thanks mayor.
Okay. Thanks so much, that's it for questions then, so as we have no speakers signed up, I am going to now make my first call for speakers for this item. One eight three 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 five three eight six one zero, code one oh six one four four five pound. This is the first call and I'll ask the clerks, is there anybody online or in chambers for this item?
No speakers mayor.
Great, second call, same number, same code. It's all on Twitter too, so I'll just ask clerks, anybody sneak in there in that thirty seconds?
No speakers mayor.
Thank you, okay.
Uh councillor Kirby Young, I think we can do that. We can't really have two active applications on a property at once. Um so I'm just gonna pull Yardley uh up front. She's in the in the back room and have her help me answer these questions. But um if council wanted to approve the heritage designation tonight, I think they could. Uh and you could give staff direction to continue working with the applicant. Um it's not necessary. We we can certainly do that. There are significant implications for the form of development and shadowing Victory Square on this property, and I think that's probably the reason uh that we discourage the applicant from going that way. But it doesn't hurt to talk. We can certainly run this through the P E P process and bring that forward to council also.
Okay.
Are you satisfied with that councillor Kirby Young, or do you want to wait for more explanation?
Uh no, I'll send, I will um send some language into staff on along those lines for them to take a look at while we go through the rest of the procedural piece. Thanks, mayor.
Okay. Thanks so much. That's it for uh questions then. Um so as we have no speakers signed up, I am going to now make my first call for speakers for this item. Uh one eight, three, 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 five, three, eight, six, one, zero, code one oh six, one, four, four, five pound. This is the first call, and I'll ask the clerks, is there anybody online or in chambers for this item?
No speakers, mayor.
Great. Second call, same number, same code. Uh it's all on Twitter too. Uh so I'll just ask clerks, anybody sneak in there in that thirty seconds?
No speakers, mayor.
Thank you. Okay, this is the third call then, so I'm gonna have a five-minute recess so we can give folks a last chance to get in. I think we're right at six thirty. We are right at six thirty. We'll come back at six thirty-five. Thanks so much.
No speakers, mayor.
Okay, we're gonna close the speakers list and close the receipt of public comments and just ask, uh does the applicant have any closing comments?
I I greatly appreciate the questions from council. Um is this has been a quite dynamic project, uh one that we would really entertain and and have the discussion with staff about a rezoning to achieve a hotel. Um it was our original intent when we purchased this property, given the dynamics of the hotel industry. Um with that said, I do recognize the process that we've gone through and the heritage aspects and but would really welcome further discussions with staff on this topic.
Okay, great. Thanks so much. Um let's see now, we're going back to uh staff with any closing comments from staff?
Uh we don't have any. Thank you.
Okay, great. Uh over to council, uh councillor Kirby Young, you have questions for staff? No? Um.
No, but I'm happy to move the recommendations at the appropriate time, and then I would like to post amendment.
Right now, it's the appropriate time?
I.
Seconder?
Second.
Councillor Weave, thank you. We're on the main queue now if there's any debates. And just a reminder, uh just a reminder, uh if you want to vote on this item, your video will have to be uh enabled. Thanks. Go ahead.
Uh mayor, sorry, I'm not sure if you heard me. I said I also do have an amendment as well.
Yeah, go for it. Put yourself on the list and.
Oh, sorry, blew off there. Um there we go.
Okay, great. Go right ahead.
Okay, um I've spent in what I hope is some very general language to staff, um but it's a very quick turnaround. I recognize that, but I'm hopeful that this is um general enough that it signals the intent, provides the full flexibility and doesn't presuppose any outcome or policy contravention, but just continues the um discussion, the opportunity to support the continued hotel use. And the spirit of this really is hearing the applicant that that was a desire of purchasing the property. There's still interest there, recognizing the significant shortage of hotel rooms we have, which is um constraining um our opportunities with our tourism sector. It's making our hotels as expensive as our housing is um and making it.
Councillor Kirby Young, we haven't received uh any amendments at this point. Clerks have uh or nor have I, so.
Should be there. Checking my sense. It's in my scent. Is it popping up when you're in?
It is. Okay, just arrived now.
Okay.
I'll just get clerks to pull that up. Um. Get clerks to pull that up on the screen so everybody can see it.
Thanks, mayor.
Okay.
Can I continue on? Is that okay now?
Sure, you'd like to. Yep.
Yeah, um and so it is really constraining the opportunity in our hotel sector, and we are losing them. It's very difficult to build. And I always say the analogy is really similar to what we experience in the residential market um when we're trying to strive for rental, but the economics favor strata, and it's the same thing oftentimes with commercial um that they favor office and hotels are more difficult to run, and that does require, I think, some updates to policies and some flexibility um on specific sites to ensure that we can continue to not build hotels and keep what we have. So the language, I think, is very general, um and I'll just read it quickly for the record, is that council directs staff to continue working with the applicant on the potential and opportunity to support hotel use, a potential additional density to enable such use. As part of ongoing rezoning discussion for the site, giving considerize consideration to utilization of the P E P or policy inquiry process should the applicant wish to pursue that direction.
Great, thanks.
Tended to be um open-ended enough, but to signal the intent.
Okay, I am just going to pause this here for a second, just check with the clerks and uh just to make sure we're all in order here, and I'll be right back. All clerks, well, all three and the uh planning team. Just uh so this this is in order and uh staff think they can work with us, so uh do we have a seconder for this?
Second.
Right, thanks. Anybody else want to speak to this item? No? Okay, let's call a vote on uh sorry. I'm just gonna clear the queue. So this is an amendment. I'm just gonna double check that nobody wants else wants to speak to this. Now we'll move to a vote. I think councillor Hardwick is still absent clerks. Uh councillor Dejanova is on leave. And I'm not sure councillor Dominado is here. Right, okay.
I won't be voting as I've missed the proceedings.
Okay, thanks. Uh we're almost done this item, so uh right, that passes uh unanimously. Council, we're back to the main queue. Anybody else want to say anything on this item? Nope. Okay, call a vote on the amended staff report. And that passes unanimously too. Thank you very much, council. That item is done. Now we'll move to the next item. Okey dokey. We are moving to um item two, regulation redesign. There are no speakers to this either, council. Uh this is uh draft updated zoning bu development by law. Uh I'm gonna ask first if anybody has a conflict. If not, just a reminder to council, there was an additional yellow memo added to this item. It doesn't alter the recommendations. It's informational only, so just wanted to draw that to your attention. Uh clerk is now gonna read the application and summary of correspondence.
This is an application by the general manager of planning urban design and sustainability to amend administrative sections, general regulations, sections and district schedules of the zoning and development by law to improve document navigation and accessibility and to clarify and consolidate land use regulations. The general manager of planning urban design and sustainability recommends approval, subject to conditions set out in the summary and recommendation of the public hearing agenda. No correspondence has been received since referral to public hearing, and this represents all correspondence received up to four thirty P M. Today.
Thanks so much. Uh anybody wants to speak to this application? One eight, three, 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 five, three, eight, six, one, zero, code one oh six, one, four, four, five pound. Uh we do have Diana Leung here from the uh citywide and regional planning uh units. Um but there are no speakers to this item, so uh does anybody want to see the presentation? I don't hear anybody, so I'll just move on and um ask if there's any questions. You have any questions to staff? Please put yourself on the list, councillor Weave. There we go. Okay.
Just quickly. There's a lot of work, and most of this is just words here and there. Um but I know we've talked in the past about really simplifying. And so I was almost hoping to see more red cutting out than just changing a word from here. So I'm just wondering, as we go through these, do we see that in the future we might see more clarity and more simplification of some of these significant documents that really break down every element of it? Um and less just about changing a few words here and there.
Right. Thank you, councillor Weave. It's a great question. Um we have done a lot of that here. This bylaw actually makes the by like the zoning and development bylaw a lot more clear, more accessible, easier to find information and much easier to administer. Um we have worked with industry experts, but we've also ground-truthed it with just regular people, and we do find it to be much more um easy and just accessible, so.
Okay, yeah, no, a lot of stuff really clarifies it, so.
Yeah, done a lot of really great work, but of course we'll continue to do that too.
Amazing. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. Just one second here, council. Any note from the clerks? Okay. Uh we're good now. Uh so there is nobody on the list, so we're gonna just uh ask speakers if you want to speak to this item. The number's on Twitter and uh clerks, do we have anybody uh in the chambers or online for this item?
No speakers, mayor.
Great. Uh one eight, three, 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 five, three, eight, six, one, zero, code one oh six, one, four, four, five pound. Uh this is call number two. Speakers, clerk?
No speakers, mayor.
Right. Third call, six forty-eight. We'll come back at um we'll come back at six fifty-three uh to finish this item. Back after the five minutes, clerks, anybody else there to speak to this item?
No speakers, Mayor.
Okay, thanks. Uh, so we're going to close the speakers list and close the. Uh, receipt of public comments and um. Staff, do you have any closing comments?
No, thank you.
Uh, council, any questions? I don't see anybody on the list. I'm a mover, please. Oh, Counselor Carr, you have questions?
Oh, I was just gonna, um, move the recommendations along with the yellow memo.
Thank you. Do we have a second or?
Second.
Great. We're on the main queue. Anybody want to debate this item? Counselor Weeb?
I'm just going to quickly speak to it. I think it's one of the longest reports we've ever seen. Um, and on page two thousand, two hundred and eighty-two, it has fifty cents in the corner. It's pretty amazing to see. Um, what it used to cost to get these policies and how in depth and how integrate. And it makes a lot of sense why. Um, some of the development takes as long as it does. So really appreciate this work and love the fact that. We're getting these updates to clarify and clean it up and make it more accessible for the public. So good work on staff on going through two hundred and. Two thousand, six hundred and sixty-nine pages for this report.
Thank you. Anybody else on this item? Don't see anybody, so we'll call a vote on this then.
There, I'll take a vote assist in favor, please.
Counselor Domino? Thank you unanimously. Thanks. Thanks to staff for all their work here. Um. Gonna move to the next item, which is number three, uh, C D one rezoning on four one eight Alexandra Street. Um, just checking here, council, I don't think there are speakers. To this one either. Uh, there are not. Go ahead, clerks. Um, read the application, please.
This is an application by T L Housing Solutions Limited to rezone four one eight dash four nine six Alexander Street from. D E O D downtown east side Oppenheimer district to C D one comprehensive development district to permit the development of a sixteen story mixed use building. Containing one hundred eighty-one social housing units, a social enterprise space and childcare facility. A building height of forty-eight point eight meters, equivalent to one hundred sixty feet and a floor space ratio F S R of five point six seven are proposed. The general manager of planning urban design and sustainability recommends approval. Subject to the conditions set out in the summary and recommendation of the public hearing agenda. The following correspondence has been received since the referral to public hearing. Two pieces of correspondence and support. This represents all correspondence received up to four thirty P M. Today.
Thanks very much, clerks. We just got to check first. If anybody wants to declare a conflict of interest, please do so now. Also a reminder, there is a yellow memo. Uh, this one actually has to be attached when considering the recommendation. So whoever moves it, um. Just remember that. And um, the number to call in is one eight, three, 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 five, three, eight, six, one, zero. Code one oh, six, one, four, four, five pound. Uh, we have Carly Rosenblatt here from the rezoning center to speak to this. However, we don't have any speakers, uh, public speakers listed for this item. So we could just move on if everybody's okay with that. I'll just, unless I hear objections, I'll keep, keep moving on. Okay, uh, so we're going to skip the presentation and go right to the application team. It is the applicant team here to speak to this application.
Yep, uh, we are. It's Janice. Hi.
Oh, hi. Uh, did you, uh, want to speak to this or do you just want to move or take questions?
Um, I think we're happy to waive the presentation in the interest of time unless anybody is, um, keen to see it.
Okay, thanks. Uh, I don't, uh. See anybody on the list. Um. Uh, for team, uh, questions to the applicant team or staff team. Just going to wait for a second. I don't see any counselors on the list. So we'll go to hear from the public. Um. I'll make my first call then for speakers on the side of one eight, three, 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 five, three, eight, six, one, zero, code one oh, six, one, four, four, five pound. Clerks, anybody there to speak to this item?
No speakers, Mayor.
Great. Uh, do the ridiculous second call for speakers. Uh, anybody there?
Still no speakers, Mayor.
Okay, third call. It is eight, sorry, it's six fifty-eight. We'll come back at seven oh, three, um. To, uh, to continue with this item. So we'll see you in five minutes, council.
No speakers, Mayor.
Thank you very much. Um, so well, with that, we'll close the speakers list and, uh, close the public comments on this item. Um. And just ask if the applicant has any closing comments.
Um, I don't think so.
Okay, thank you. Staff have any closing comments?
No, we don't have any closing comments. Thank you.
Okay, Counselor Kirby, uh, questions for staff?
Yeah, thanks. Just a quick one. Uh, just confirming this is going, is both owned, going to be developed by and be operated by A Tira. Is that correct?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, and, um, in terms of. Sort of the mix are. Is this looking in terms of teneting? And I know we have to be, um, sort of generalities. Is this looking for diversity in this building or? Are there any additional perspective or information that staff can provide in terms of who's going to find homes here?
A Tera from, uh, would be the best to respond to this in terms of who their prospective tenants might be.
Sure, I'm happy to respond. So it's a mixed income building. About forty-four percent of the units are family units for women and children. Um, will be focused on, um, many of the women, children who currently live in second stage housing in the downtown east side and can't find permanent affordable housing here when their kids are in school. Um, which is a challenge. Um, so thirty-three percent of the units will rent at maximum shelter allowance, thirty-three percent at, um. Uh, rent geared to income and thirty-three percent at low end of market. So. Uh, we're also working with the Vancouver Japanese language school. We're pri- prioritize Japanese seniors who want, um, to be more closely connected with the language school. So. Um, yeah, it'll be a mix of folks.
Okay, that's helpful perspective. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Uh, Counselor Dejanova is next. For questions to staff. Counselor Dejanova?
Sorry, I was double muted. I don't see anyone else on the queue. I'm having the recommendations, man.
Great, thanks. We got a second or?
Second.
Thank you so much. Uh, anybody want to speak to this item? So put yourself on the list. With the yellow memo, of course, it's been moved. Just to remind everybody that was. Thank you. Counselor Swanson, uh. Up to five minutes, the floor is yours.
I just want to say more and more and more of these in every neighborhood.
Okay, thank you. Uh, great. So we're going to call, uh, vote on this item unless Counselor Swanson, you have something else? No. Okay, so I'll call a vote on this item.
Mayor, can I get a vote assist in favor, please?
Great. Uh, Counselor Domino in favor, please. That passes unanimously. Thanks so much. And we are done that item and on to the next one. Um. For item number four, uh, somebody needs to mute because I can hear your background. Uh, we're on, um. C D one rezoning on three, seven, three, nine, seven, zero Main Street. Just wondering if any member of council wishes to declare a conflict, please do so. And we'll have the clerk read the application and summary correspondence.
This is an application by La Carne Legacy Corporation to rezone three nine, seven, zero dash three, nine, nine, eight Main Street. From C dash two commercial district to C D dash one comprehensive development district. To permit the development of a six-story mixed-use building with sixty secured market rental housing units and commercial space at grade. A building height of twenty-two point six meters, equivalent to seventy-four point one feet, with additional height for rooftop amenity. And a floor space ratio F S R of three point nine seven are proposed. The general manager of planning urban design and sustainability recommends approval. Subject to conditions set out in the summary and recommendation of the public hearing agenda. The following correspondence has been received since the referral to public hearing. Thirty-three pieces of correspondence and support, eight pieces of correspondence in opposition. And one piece of correspondence dealing with other aspects of the application. This represents all correspondence received up to four thirty P M. Today.
Thanks very much, staff. Uh, let's see now. We do have speakers to this item, council. Uh. And we also have Robert White here from the rezoning center. So, uh, probably best to see the, uh, the presentation here. So let's move ahead with that. Uh, just wait for things to get set up and then we'll go ahead with Robert White.
Perfect. Thank you, Mayor. So good evening, Mayor and council. My name is Robert White, rezoning planner for this application, which proposes to rezone three nine, seven, zero to three nine, eight, nine, eight Main Street. Under the secured rental policy. The site shown in red is located in Riley Park on the northeast corner of Main Street and East Twenty-Fourth Avenue. Zoned C two commercial. This corner site is comprised of three parcels with an area of approximately twelve hundred square meters. And a site frontage along Main Street of thirty-seven point five meters. C two zoning extends along Main Street north to Sixteenth Avenue and south to Thirty-third Avenue. Beyond Main Street to the east and to the west, properties are generally zoned R S seven and R S one. This is a view from above looking north with the site outlined in red. Properties zone C two along Main Street are generally developed with one to four story commercial or mixed-use buildings. Properties zoned R S seven or R S one away from Main Street are generally developed with single detached houses. David Livingston Elementary School and Prince Edward Park are short distance away to the northeast. Other neighborhood amenities are located nearby, such as Little Mountain Neighborhood House immediately across Main Street. Hillcrest Park and the Hillcrest Community Center, including the Terry Salmon Library, are located about a kilometer away to the southwest. The site is adjacent to frequent transit along Main Street and nearby along King Edward Avenue. This slide shows the property boundaries. The southern portion of the site on the right was previously owned. By the Mid-Maine Community Health Center, who sold their property prior to submission of this rezoning application. In order to relocate to a new larger facility further north on Main Street. The northern portion on the left includes commercial units on the ground floor. And three residential units above with one tenant eligible under the tenant relocation and protection policy. The Housing Vancouver Strategy sets a target of twenty thousand new market rental housing units across the city. To help address Vancouver's historically low rental vacancy rates. This rezoning application is being considered under the secured rental policy in effect at the time of application submission in September twenty twenty-one. For sites in C two zones, the policy at that time provided general direction for consideration of additional height and density up to six stories. Last December, council approved changes to the secured rental policy. As well as to the C two district schedule to streamline new secured rental housing across the city. Following these changes, six-story mixed-use buildings proposing secured rental residential units. Can be developed on properties zoned C two directly through a development application process. Having commenced the review of this rezoning application before council approved those changes, the applicant chose to continue with this application. The application submitted September twenty twenty-one proposes to rezone the site from C two to C D one. To permit the development of a six-story mixed-use building with sixty secured market rental residential units, commercial retail space on. commercial retail space on the ground floor, and rooftop amenity space. The proposed unit mix exceeds the thirty-five percent required in the family room housing mix policy with approximately forty-two percent of units being two and three bedroom. The proposed building height is twenty-two point six meters with a proposed rooftop amenity space to a maximum height of twenty-five point two meters. And I'll note the public hearing notification incorrectly indicated the height as twenty-five point two meters with additional height for rooftop amenity rather than twenty-two point six meters with additional height. The proposed density is three point nine seven FSR, and the project would generate approximately forty-five construction jobs. This application proposing secured market rental units is not seeking a D C L waiver. To get a sense of the relative affordability of renting when compared to owning, the average market rents for newer buildings on the east side are shown in blue and the costs of ownership are shown in orange. Following submission of the rezoning application last fall, a virtual open house was held from October twenty-fifth to November fourteenth. Approximately eight hundred and sixty-seven notification postcards were mailed, and in total, we received one hundred and sixty-four pieces of feedback. Key themes of support for the proposal included the height, massing, density and location, the building design, and new housing choices and commercial opportunities. We heard comments of concern around the height, massing, density and location, the building design not matching the immediate context. In response, the proposed six-story building is generally consistent with the built form that can be approved under the existing C two zoning in this area as a result of council's approved changes to streamline rental housing. As well, the proposal includes narrow storefront expressions and brickwork appropriate to the context. We also heard concerns the proposal did not include enough parking and that increased development in the area has resulted in the loss of local businesses or amenities and community cultural character. This project will meet the requirements of the parking bylaw, and staff are continuing to explore ways to support local businesses through displacement as a result of redevelopment across the city. I'll note the health center previous located here has sold their property in order to relocate to a larger newer facility. In summary, staff recommend approval of the application to rezone three nine seven zero to three nine nine eight Main Street from C two to C D one, subject to the conditions outlined in Appendix B of the report as it meets the intent of the secured rental policy. If approved, the application would contribute sixty secured market rental units to help reach the city's goals identified in the Housing Vancouver Strategy. Staff and the applicant team are available to answer questions you may have about this application. Thank you.
There.
All right, I was on mute. Uh, applicant team, are you here to speak to this application?
Uh, we are. Uh, can you hear me?
Sure can.
Okay, great. Uh, I do have a few opening remarks. I'll quickly go through. First off, thank you for your time this this evening and for your consideration of this project. Um, as a brief background and introduction, over the past five years, our company has completed four new purpose-built rental buildings in Vancouver. We have another four projects in various stages of construction or approvals, including this one. Uh, we're committed to building rental apartments in Vancouver as we believe strongly there's a critical shortage of them. A number of our previous projects are mixed use and are similar in form to the proposal tonight. Uh, in all of our projects, we make a point of incorporating high-quality design materials and a curated commercial tenant mix that makes them memorable and places of interest. Previously completed mixed-use projects include the Grace located at West Broadway and Balla Clava Street in Kitsellano, which has been very well received by the community. Uh, for the project under consideration tonight, our goal is to also create something that's special and that will help liven and activate the street front. To achieve this, we've utilized high-quality materials such as brick. We've added subtle touches such as recessed storefronts, wood storefront doors, and decorative street front light fixtures and pavers that will run along all frontages of the building on Main and Twenty-Fourth Avenue. Um, as we have on previous projects, we intend to find commercial tenants for this building that are complementary to the residential uses upstairs and most importantly, to the neighborhood. It's our plan to own the building indefinitely and to be longstanding and active members of a community in which it's located. Our desire to establish roots in the neighborhood has guided our engagement with the community, and we as a company have voluntarily reached out to local establishments such as Sir Charles Tucker High School and General Wolf Elementary School to get involved with important community projects whereby we could lend our support. Uh, thank you for your time and consideration this evening, and we look forward to hopefully delivering this and many more rental projects in the future.
Great. Thank you so much for your time. Um, council, questions to staff or the applicant? Counselor Swanson?
Yeah, I have some questions for the applicant.
Okay.
Will this be a pet-friendly building?
Yes, it will be.
Okay, good. Will you have E V charging?
Yes, we will.
How about A C?
Uh, we are exploring different measures to cool the building. Um, we have not got into full design yet, but uh, we are looking into this.
That would be important. How about gas cook stoves?
Uh, we have not included gas cook stoves in previous projects. We've you included electric stove tops.
Yay. Um, are you gonna be getting any federal or provincial financing?
On our previous rental projects to date, we have not utilized uh, any government-related financing. We will explore it at the time of construction, but on past projects, you've elected not to use it. So still still in the air, but potentially unlikely.
So is there anything that we could talk you into doing to create more affordability here?
Um, I think the I think the basic equation is that in a rental project of this nature on Main Street, um, you know, for that to be viable, we would need more density. And it's uh, in a C two zone, it's a drastic jump. Um, because as you go above six stories, you're required to include or you're required to use concrete construction, uh, which is, you know, a far greater cost. So, um, as is, I think that would be a challenge uh, in this particular building.
Hey, that's what I expected you'd say. Thanks.
Counselor Wade.
Uh, yeah, I'm looking at the amenity space on the roof and just looking, is the rest of the roof gonna be aggregate or is it gonna be a green roof? Is there ability to poll naves out there? It's tough to see from the proposal in front of us what you expect to be the roof outside of the amenity space.
Yeah, a couple things on that. Um, since the rezoning application was submitted, uh, we uh, we had hoped that we could include the indoor amenity on the roof, but uh, and having sat down with the building department and the fire department, uh, we are not actually able to do that. And so for the development permit application, we will be incorporating the indoor amenity back within the uh, lower floors of the building. We will still maintain and keep the upstairs amenity, including a green roof component. And because the indoor amenity will no longer be there, we'll be expanding the outdoor space upstairs.
Okay, so will there be an ability to put as much greenery on the roof as possible?
Yes, we're still working through um, our landscape design. Uh, so not a hundred percent done yet, but absolutely, we want to include a robust landscaping. Um, we want to include robust landscaping on the roof with trees uh, and other uh, other forms of planting. Um, definitely for the experience on the roof, we want to to be, you know, as comprehensive as possible.
Okay, uh, my follow-up to staff recognizing the well-being component of having amenity spaces on the roof, um, including washrooms for people with disabilities and wondering um, why we're not able to work with proponent to put an amenity space on the roof.
You for your question. I'm a development planner colleague. G Tech Park can help respond to this.
Hi, G Tech Park, Development Planner with Current Planning. Uh, thank you for the question. Uh, it's really the applicant's choice where to locate the indoor amenity space. Um, as alluded by the applicant, it may be an issue with the building code and the fire department, uh, fired access as well.
Okay, is there anyone from fire or some component that can talk about, because we continue to, most projects, we've been able to put them on the seventh floor. So I'm just wondering what's different by fire code to not be able to do it here?
Hi, my name is Brandon and I'm on the applicant team.
Okay.
The reason is because um, for combustible construction buildings or wood frame buildings, uh, seven stories are not permitted under the building code. So you're not allowed habitable space on a seventh story of a wood frame building.
Okay, and we've seen in other buildings, so it'll be interesting to see that move forward because it'd be great to have that space. Thanks. That's all my questions.
Thank you.
Uh, Counselor Kirby, you're up next.
Yeah, thanks, Mayor. With respect to, this is a question for the applicant, and with respect to the commercial um, at the at the Main Street level, literally on Main Street, um, what's the vision for the retail? You're not planning, given the fact you know, Main Street's known for sort of its character, you're not planning to tend to it with a bank or a sleep country, are you?
Uh, I I can say for one hundred percent, we are not intending to put the sleep country, a second sleep country in uh, across the street. Um, our preference one hundred percent is to put in a group of tenants, ideally three or four, um, that all have different services and are complementary to the people living upstairs and in the neighborhood. This has been consistently how our other mixed-use projects have worked out. Um, so that's our hope. Have, you know, sort of an exciting tenant mix that does complement the street.
So would that be sort of locally serving needs? Could it be cafe, food services, a small grocer, local shops, retail? Just looking for a little bit of additional color.
For sure, for sure. And I'll I'll highlight two of our other projects, the one that I mentioned earlier at Broadway and um, Balla Clava. Uh, we did have Starbucks in that building, but we also had the Parthenon, a local grocery store, a local dry cleaner, and then a franchise but owned by a fitness franchise but owned by a local company on Fraser Street at Twenty-Third, where we are under construction uh, with another mixed-use rental project. Uh, we have five C R U's there. We have a locally-owned kids' cooking school, a locally-owned physiotherapist, um, and a locally-owned bakery and coffee shop, and uh, we have one remaining C R U, but generally speaking, all of the interest has been local businesses.
Okay, that's fantastic to hear. Thank you.
Thanks so much. Uh, that's it for questions. So now we're gonna go to hear from the public. Uh, council, the first um, speaker is Alexander Lindsay, speaker number one, Alexander Lindsay.
Hello, can you hear me?
Sure can. Up to five minutes whenever you're ready.
Great. Um, hello, my name is Alex and I'm speaking in support of this project. I'm a young professional in the city and renting an apartment uh, with my partner a few blocks away from this proposed development. This country is in a housing crisis. Normal people like me are finding it exceedingly difficult and in many cases impossible to live in many Canadian cities. Vancouver, of course, is at the top of that list, and it's only getting worse. This is a fact members of this council acknowledge and pay lip service to in speeches and engaging with the public and the media. Vancouver has a chronic undersupply of housing. This isn't because of the mountains or sea or our parks and green areas. This isn't because there are just too many people flooding here that our otherwise healthy supply of housing just can't keep up. No. The undersupply lies squarely at the foot of this body and their inability to loosen their grasp on the people of the city and the builders that are trying to fix this problem. It is due to the fact that they just cannot let builders build. It takes years for permits to be issued. There are hundreds, if not thousands, of empty lots and old low-density rundown properties that builders are clamoring to develop to build thousands of desperately needed homes for the people of the city. They sit for years in permitting limbo. Instead of making this important process easier and more efficient to the benefit of the people this body represents, the Vancouver City Council arbitrarily imposes costs on builders through overburdensome regulations, delays and demands.
I appreciate your general, I appreciate your general points here, but uh, could you speak specifically to this uh, this project?
Yes, I can.
That'd be great.
I have sat in on a couple of these meetings and witnessed members of this council impose delays on important projects that would create hundreds of desperately needed new homes. Members of this body, of course, are concerned about things like how high the fence on the back of the property or the alleyway is. Is it pet-friendly? Will there be a sleep country on the first floor? Is it quote-unquote sufficiently livable? Why do you get to decide what is livable and what isn't, and not the people who will buy or rent these places? Why do you get to decide what businesses serve the community and not the members of the community themselves? It it is these unreasonable demands and delays that are ruining this great city for normal people. People who don't want to spend fifty, sixty, seventy percent or more of their income on having a place to live. In conclusion, I support this project and every project like it and would like to see it and future applications passed in the future. Thank you for your time.
Thanks so much. Uh, appreciate you calling in tonight. I don't see any questions for you, so I am going to move to the next speaker, who is uh, speaker number two, Michael Weeb. Perhaps no relation. Hi there. Uh, up to five minutes, please.
Hi, my name is Michael Weeb. I'm a renter in Vancouver and I'm calling to support this project. Uh, I saw a recent Canadian Mortgage and Housing Corporation report that said that we need to build three point five million housing units uh, above and beyond the current projections to maintain affordability or achieve affordability in Canada. So we need to get all the housing that we can. Some may oppose this building because it doesn't have below-market housing, but we can't let the perfect be the enemy of the good. Our housing supply needs to match the diversity of incomes in our community, and there are plenty of people who can afford a market-rate apartment. Moreover, market-rate apartments do improve affordability overall. The new housing will allow locals to upgrade if housing elsewhere in the city. This is known as a vacancy chain effect where one person moving into a new unit vacates their original unit, allowing a second person to move in and vacate a unit, which in turn allows a third person to move into that unit and so on. New rate housing on the city. The vacancy chain mechanism means this is a direction moving of ability overall.
Sorry, Speaker, your 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 phone is cutting in and out, uh, so it's difficult to hear you.
Sorry. And if we don't, this apartment increase will just result in more competition for housing elsewhere. Amazon is adding a new office downtown and tech workers have salaries that allow them to outcompensate.
Sorry, sorry, Speaker, you're you're cutting in and out. We we can't really hear what you're what you're saying. We get about every third word. Perhaps you could uh, call back in. I'll um, what I'm gonna do is I'll ask you to call back in and I will uh, move to the next speaker. Uh, the next speaker is number three, Alan Buium.
Mayor and council, uh, yeah, uh, Mayor, it's Buium. Um, and I've been here. That I pronounce my surname Buium, B U I U M.
My apologies.
No, no need to apologize. I uh, it's a rather difficult one, to say the least. Uh, so um, Mayor and council, thank you for the opportunity to speak on behalf of the R P S C, that's Riley Park South Cabbie Steering Committee on this rezoning application. As you've probably seen the material we sent to you, it's rather difficult for us to support the proposal in its present form. Yes, we support a secured rental building, but at what cost to the community? We can only hope that the market rental rates will be truly affordable for many who are categorized as the missing middle. Now, I heard the planner in a presentation a few minutes ago, but from the material we looked at online, our most serious objection is the overall height of the building, a six-story structure that measures out at eighty-eight point six-six feet, which we find unacceptable. We're looking at a location that is zoned for four stories with no rezoning application. And uh, one of them happens to be across the street on the south side of Twenty-Fourth Avenue and going to King Edward. Um, so what we're saying, seeing is with this type of building, that there will be Um, so what we're saying, seeing is with this type of building, that there will be shadows across the street on the south side of Twenty-Fourth, as well as east on uh, Twenty-Fourth Avenue, that is the immediate neighbors. A further contentious issue uh, really is the feature of a rooftop amenity. We've expressed our concerns with rooftop amenities on the Caby corridor. It was introduced with no community consultation. And so we felt that uh, we needed to say that again here, because we're now seeing that this rooftop amenity idea seems to be carrying over from the corridor itself. The amenity, we feel, creates a silo effect that detracts from the creation uh, or enha- of enhancing a community. And um, rather than people going up the stairs, we've seen in the rationale, uh, rezoning rationale on this project, that they praise, you know, the very active Main Street with pedestrians and you're gonna have an extended pedestrian area in front of the shops as well. So we feel that the rooftop amenity detracts from the establishment of a true community. The uh, and we also find that in the write-up, there seems to be, and I'm emphasizing this because it's community, that the Tupper Greenway is one area and the other is the north side of Livingston School, which is a park-like setting, and would be used by, and it is used by large numbers of families all the time, that is in decent weather. Okay, um, and we didn't find that there was reference to the Little Mountain Neighborhood House in the write-up, but I now heard this evening that there, it is, yes, it is across the street. And it's a very important community amenity for the area. And they may not, we hope that they won't be there all that long. They're hoping to get a, a new building on the Little Mountain Housing Site. But if we hold our breath on that one, um, we may not survive that long. Um, and at the same time, the neighborhood house offers amenities that should be noted, offering daycare and seniors programs, just as two of them, as well as overseeing a strong community garden at Riley Park, which is an excellent example again of community building, and the rooftop amenity will not do that. And the mentioning of Hillcrest uh, Centre and Douglas Park Community Centres is well and good, but at the same time, Hillcrest, it designated by Park Board, is a destination centre, not a true community centre like Douglas Park and many others in the city, and both of them are nearing or have reached capacity. Another comment uh, there in a suggestion is that, or the question really is, between on levels five and six, there does not seem to be a setback as we've seen on other buildings within the area. And I think that is it. Thank you.
Thank you for your time uh, today. We, I don't see any questions for you, so I am gonna move to the next speaker. Uh, council, the next speaker is um, Nick uh, uh, Calagros. Calagros?
Speaker four is not on the line, Mayor.
Thank you, clerks. Uh, speaker five, Jean Hummel.
How can, why can't they hear me?
Uh, we can hear you. We sure can.
So, okay, so this sucks. Okay, so you can hear me? I can't use my headset. Can you hear me right now?
We sure can.
So, okay, so I'm Jean Hummel. I've lived on the street for thirty years. I live um, in a little house down on Twenty-Fourth Avenue, um, which is the affected neighborhood. Um, which I haven't actually heard very many people speaking to that, but, so I'm gonna just quickly go through my points, hopefully. So one is the height, that the four-story C-two building um, that's on the corner, that is forty-five feet high. This one is eighty-two feet, point seven feet high in total, plus an additional height for a rooftop amenity space, which we're now, we're hearing some confusion about that. In fact, this building is being proposed is thirty-seven point seven feet higher than the building that follows the community plan, which is across the street. And then if you add in the additional space on the seventh floor with a nine-foot ceiling, that becomes forty-six point seven feet higher than the four-story C-two building, which is actually what this location is zoned for. In other words, this building is over twice as tall as the building that confirms to the current building code. How is it that two extra floors of living space require this much additional building height? Um, the other problem, I would like to note a note of problem in that in November, I sent in some questions to the city. The city told me that the maximum building height of eighty-three feet is measured to the top of the rooftop indoor amenity room. However, the notice of public hearing that I received in my bail box says that there is a building height of eighty-two point seven feet with additional height for a rooftop amenity space. This means that the information provided to the public is not consistent and must be incorrect somewhere. This should be of concern to the councillors who are voting on this proposed change to zoning. Information needs to be correct for concerned parties to have full knowledge of what is being proposed. It also means that the community engagement process is, is including incorrect, incorrect information to the public and this may affect people's viewpoint. I also would like to note that when I asked about the changes um, about the height, I was told by city staff that the changes to ceiling heights can be considered in order to lower the overall height of this proposed building. So you have it in your power to change the design of this building, not necessarily changing the number of spaces, but to change the design so that it fits better in the streetscape. Um, it, I was also told that rental buildings can be lower than the proposed six or seven-story buildings that is, this, this proposal, and that staff will consider the existing site and how the overall height of the building impacts the surrounding area. I suggest that just by the double in height design, that, or nearly double in height design of this building, it does not fit in with the surrounding area as it is overbuilt and dwarfs the surrounding neighborhood. In regards to the design, it's a large blocky building that dwarfs and overwhelms the suite and surrounding neighborhood. The proposed building goes right to the edge on East Twenty-Fourth Avenue, and there is no um, and there is no transition to, to the single-family homes. There is only a little four-foot boulevard allowed on East Twenty-Fourth in front of this building. This contributes to the huge block-like feeling of this proposed building. Um, I'm wondering if you, if councillors have ever gone into the neighbourhood, there's a building at Nineteenth and Fraser that completely dwarfs the neighboring um, houses. Have you gone there and seen what these buildings actually look like in the neighbourhood? Um, the other thing is that the builder says that the residential lobby is located at the southeastern corner of the site, which helps identify the transition to the residential homes to the east. This location also maximizes the amount of retail facing west and south and provides more flexibility to demise the retail stores. It seems to me that the concern here is having more retail stores and bigger retail spaces instead of creating a building that blends into the existing neighbourhood. I would suggest that the design is changed, so at least the height is staggered at the back to come down into the neighboring um, into the actual neighbourhood. I'd also like to point out parking problems. I live in the street, there are, this is a residential block that has eighteen houses, but has thirty-nine residences. That's thirty-nine residences when all the secondary suites are added into the count. Our street already provides twenty-one additional affordable residents on the street, and these tenants and homeowners require parking for themselves and visitors. And this is only my block in this neighbourhood. There are many houses in these, in this neighbourhood that have secondary housing, which I don't think is taken into account.
You are, uh, sorry, you are, you're five minutes, so uh, thank you very much for uh, calling in this evening. Uh, we do have a five-minute limit for everybody, so. Do, do thank you for calling in.
I didn't get.
Well, yes, but there is a five-minute limit for everybody, and this is a quasi judicial hearing, so we, we do stick close to our time. So just wanna thank you so much for uh, calling in.
Do you have any questions for me, since I actually live in the neighbourhood?
Well, uh, there are no questions from council for you, so uh, thanks so much. I'm just gonna move to the next speaker. Uh, um, uh, clerks, I believe speaker number two, uh, Michael Weeb has called uh, back in. Hi there, uh, that sounds better. Uh, up to, uh, I think you have about three minutes left, so please go ahead.
Okay, I think I'll be brief. Um, so to reiterate, uh, I'm a renter in Vancouver. Um, I also live uh, near this project, and I'm calling to support it. Yeah, so as, as a recent uh, Canadian Mortgage and Housing Corporation report uh, stated, we need three point five million additional homes beyond current projections to achieve affordability in Canada. So we need all of the housing we can get. We can't be cutting down building heights and removing units. We need more height and more units. Um, some people may oppose this building because it doesn't have below-market housing, but we can't let the perfect be the enemy of the good. Our housing supply needs to match the diversity of incomes in our community, and there are plenty of people who can afford a market-rate apartment. Moreover, market-rate apartments do improve affordability overall. The new housing will allow locals to upgrade, which will free up housing elsewhere in the city. This is known as a vacancy chain effect, where one person moving into a new unit vacates their original unit, allowing a second person to move in and vacate a unit, which in turn allows a third person to move into that unit and so, and so on. New market-rate housing has positive indirect effects on the rest of the city. This vacancy chain mechanism means that new market-rate housing is a step in the right direction for improving of housing affordability overall. And if we don't build this apartment, increasing, increases in demand will just result in more competition for housing elsewhere. Amazon is adding a new office downtown and tech workers have salaries that allow them to outcompete most other people in the housing market. Next, uh, I want to note that I live quite close to this project. The increased height will partially block my view of the sunset from my balcony, but we should build it anyway, because providing housing during an affordability crisis is more important than preserving my view. That's how a city should work. Finally, this building will create sixty units of secured market rental housing. How are you planning to consult with the future residents of this building? They deserve a say as well. Thank you.
Thank you. I uh, don't see any uh, questions for you, so I will thank you so much for uh, calling in tonight and uh, calling in twice. Thanks for that. Um, and we're, um, clerks, I think it's Kerry uh, Buntain next, speaker number six.
Can you hear me?
You can, uh, up to five minutes, please.
Thanks so much and good evening, Mayor Kennedy and the rest of the council. Thanks so much for having me on, really appreciate it. I'll try and be as brief as I possibly can. My name's Kerry Buntain and I live a few blocks away on Twenty-Eight, so similar to caller number five in close proximity, not for thirty years, but moved in the neighbourhood in twenty-seventeen, absolutely love East Vancouver. I, I don't know how you couldn't. It's amazing with all the amenities and everything that's being done there and the people uh, that make it what it is. Um, similar caller number two, I, I'm, you know, younger and in my early thirties, starting a, a family of my own. Um, and so I, you know, I can't stress enough, you know, I, I see the frustrations for change, but at the same time, uh, you know, this is exactly consistent with the development that we've seen to support rental housing and we need this. Um, and you know, it's hard not to, to be passionate about it, just for us, it's at, at this age group and, and, and younger, I feel passionately that, you know, if we don't provide this, the city's being left out, um, some of the younger people. So um, I, I like the design, a- again, it's consistent with what we've seen on other projects. Um, these rental projects need to be six stories to make sense of it. It's crystal clear to, to build it less won't, won't work economically. Um, I, I love the, the, the fact that we're contributing to new retail and continuing on with that to add more amenities to the neighbourhood. Uh, but I just, again, this is much-needed rental housing, and I just wanted to stress how important it is for um, new residents to move into this neighbourhood and continue to help develop and grow it, new jobs. Um, and market rental, as caller number two echoed, it's freeing up other forms of housing which create more affordability. I know that's hard to understand, but it, that's how it works. Um, not to mention, we're going in a new economic environment. I think, you know, everyone's having, having their heads in the sand about what's gonna happen here in the next twelve to twenty-four months. Unfortunately, a lot of projects aren't gonna get built. Um, it's important that we try and get these built as soon as we can from quality groups, local groups that are trying to add to the supply here. So I just really hope this project is supported by council, mayor, and the rest of the communities in the neighbourhood, and I, I really appreciate the time. Thanks again.
Thank you for your time, really appreciate it. Don't see any questions uh, from council for you, so I'm gonna move on to our last uh, listed speaker, who is Todd Munn, speaker number seven.
Hello.
Hi there, up to five minutes, please.
Okay, so yeah, I live on the two-hundred block of East Tw- Twenty-Fourth, and I oppose this um, because the building is just too tall. I don't understand how we can build a building that's twice as tall as the building that was, was um, built across the street, the one in which the sleep country is in, which nobody likes, obviously. Um, so yeah, and, and it not being affordable to build a four-story building, I don't know how that last caller can say that, because they went right across the street. Um, it doesn't fit the scale of the neighbourhood. The, the shading for the people that live right behind that building is just gonna make a big dark spot over their house, their houses. Um, and there's not gonna be enough, I don't think there's gonna be enough parking. There's, there's not enough parking in the building for the amount of unit. Um, yeah, it just doesn't fit the, the character of the neighbourhood and, and I'm not opposed to development. I just, like, I didn't oppose the development at, on the opposite corner. Um, but this is twice as tall and it just doesn't seem to fit the neighbourhood, and it doesn't seem fair to the people that live right behind that building. Um, and it seems like the people that are supportive of this development are not from this area. Um, and also, some, it seems like that the, the deck is being stacked a little bit from the supportive people. I, I don't know. Um, yeah, it seems like they're, they're quoting the same, same um, things in, in their proposals, which makes me wonder why they're, you know, bringing up the Amazon downtown. It, it seems interesting to me that a, a couple of people have mentioned, it almost seems like the, it's a little scripted, but uh, anyhow, uh, I'm, I may be wrong, but um, it just, yeah, it seems that a lot of people are uh, in support of this that aren't from the neighbourhood, that don't live in the area and aren't affected by it. I think that there should be um, construction and development and more housing, but just that in consideration of the neighbourhood and the people who live in the neighbourhood. Thanks for uh, letting me speak and saying my piece. Thank you.
Thanks for calling in. I uh, don't see any questions for you, so we'll just thank you so much for, for that, um, your participation. Clerks, I'm gonna make my first call for uh, additional speakers. Uh, anybody on the line or in chambers?
No additional speakers, Mayor.
Okay, uh, second call, and I can read the number out again. It is one eight three 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 five three eight six one zero, code one oh six one four four five uh, pound. Anybody there, clerks?
No speakers, Mayor.
Okay, thanks. We're gonna go to the third call. Uh, we're gonna take five minutes to give people a chance to call in. It is seven forty-eight. We'll come back at seven fifty-three. Thank you, council. Just gonna make sure everybody's video's back on. And we're pretty close to going there. Okay, clerks, anybody else on this item?
Two additional speakers at this point, Mayor.
Great, thanks. Maybe we can go to speaker number one, and if you can say your name and whether or not you're a resident of Vancouver, please.
Hello, yeah, my name is Aswan. I am a resident of Vancouver. I honestly was nervous to speak because I wanted a resident in the the building that's under consideration for rezoning. As a product of this rezoning, I will likely be displaced and lose my current home. I've actually lived in the Riley Park neighborhood for twenty-five years, so since my my family arrived in Canada from Mexico in nineteen ninety-six. I attended General Wolf Elementary School. And, yeah, unfortunately, I would say that, you know, I'm being personally affected by this rezoning, but it's a part of a trend that I've been noticing in the neighborhood since I was a child of replacing, you know, more affordable rental with higher-cost rental buildings. And, you know, for me, quite frankly, I I wouldn't care if there was a seventeen-story tower built here if it was gonna actually be affordable housing and is actually gonna serve the people in this neighborhood. I personally don't buy the, you know, supply-side argument, which we've been told for years that, you know, oh, if you build enough, you know, expensive rental housing that one day that'll trickle down to everyone else and it'll make rental housing affordable. I think there's a lot of evidence from other cities in Canada that even with the higher vacancy rate, there's no real increase in affordability in rental housing stock. Yeah, and for me, this, you know, I have a lot of fond memories of this building. The store downstairs, Lucky's Comics, is a store that I've gone to since I was a child. And I know the owner gave there very well. And I think he'll be very sad to lose, you know, that space, which has been a community hub for, you know, decades and has been a place for, yeah, like the local people have been able to hang out, get books, you know, go to shows. Yeah, and for me, it'll mean the loss of my home. I don't really know. I don't really expect, you know, my personal situation to have any effect on this decision, unfortunately, because I know how these things go. But, yeah, I just call on the councillors as kind of my last word to stop seeing these sort of developments, the solution to housing problems in the city, and to focus on actually building affordable social housing and to really protecting renters. You know, my rent, if I pay the average rent for an apartment in Vancouver after I leave this unit, that will be an almost three hundred percent increase. So the current average is two thousand seven hundred dollars. That's more than a three hundred percent increase in my rent. So you'll be creating some apartments for some rich people who can afford them. But I will likely be, have to leave the neighborhood that I've lived in for twenty-five years, and I will likely have to move somewhere farther afield and be, you know, pushed out of my community where I have my friends, where I've grown up, you know, the community that I've known and loved for many years. So, you know, I, yeah, I know how these things go, but I, you know, and I was nervous to speak because I don't know how this will affect me in the long term to speak out against this development, but I, yeah, I really think that these kinds of developments, you know, it's hardly even a Band-Aid. It's really just another, you know, it's for wealthy people, right, these sort of rental developments. They don't serve the people in the neighborhoods. They don't serve the people that already live here. They serve people who are higher income and, you know, and, yeah, and it's a part of a process of displacement that has been going on, I think, for years and that I've been a witness to in this neighborhood. So those are my comments.
Thanks so much. Do you have questions? Counselor Swanson, up to five minutes, please.
Thanks so much for calling in. Do you mind saying what your rent is now? You don't have to answer that, but I'm just curious.
Yeah, I'm happy to answer. Yeah, my current rent is nine hundred dollars for a two-bedroom.
Oh, my God, yeah. Have you been offered any relocation help?
I have been offered relocation, like I have been offered the prospect of the relocation help when the application is approved. But other than that, yeah, that's all I have now, yeah.
So have they said anything about, you know, finding you a place at your current rent and then offering you to write a first refusal in the new place when it gets built at the same rent? Have they said anything like that, or that would be going above and beyond the current tenant relocation policy, but it's like what we're striving for in the Broadway Plan area?
Yeah, so what I've been offered is help with relocation, not at my current rent. And I've also been offered to return to the building at twenty percent discount of the market, which is, I guess, that's the the policy, but not write a first refusal as you're describing at the current rent.
Yeah, so twenty percent below market would be about twelve hundred for a studio. And you've got a two-bedroom. I don't know what that would be. It wouldn't be nearly what you've got now, that's for sure. Okay, thank you so much.
Yeah, more than twice so much.
Yeah, I think you're, I'm glad you spoke. I think you raised a really, really important point that we desperately need to improve the tenant protections for people that are being demovicted. And thank you for doing that.
Thank you. That's it for questions. I'm gonna go to the next speaker. Just a reminder, councillors, the questions to speakers are for clarification. We save debate until after the close of the speakers list. We go to the next speaker. Could you say your name and whether or not you're a resident of Vancouver?
Hello, can you hear me?
Sure can. Up to five minutes, please.
Great. Hi, hi, my name's Paige Wadman, and I'm a resident of East Twenty Fourth Avenue, about five houses behind the proposed building. So I'm called in after listening to the conversation. I'm one of those residents who will be behind the shadow of a very tall new building. I'm fully in support of rental housing in the city and rental housing on this exact spot. I have not heard a compelling reason from the developer why the building needs to be double the height of the other building that is on the southeast corner of Main and Twenty Fourth Avenue. There is another multi-use building there, the one that has been referred to with the sleep country on the main floor. Those apartments do not overshadow the entire block. And I just don't, I would like to know, I guess, from council, why the developers being allowed to build something that is so much higher that affects the neighborhood so drastically. The other buildings are single-story along Main Street, so this will be a real anomaly. I really wanna underscore the comments by the other resident who I don't know. Actually, I'm not sure who that neighbor is of mine who also lives on Twenty Fourth, but who articulated just the way in which this will be have a huge impact on neighbors in behind when we could achieve a similar end of rental housing on the exact same spot without all of this increased height and a negative impact on neighbors in behind. So I guess I would hope that council would hold the developers' toes to the fire on that and have them bring the building down in height and also provide some transition to the single-family housing in behind. I'm not one of the first couple neighbors, but I absolutely agree it will be really really difficult for them, but it will affect the whole block in the afternoon. I'm not sure why that's a necessity in order to provide rental housing. I feel like the conversation has been formed in the terms of this kind of dichotomy, like either you're for rental housing and densification, so the height of this large building is okay, or you're against renting and providing rental housing in the market in Vancouver. Obviously, those are not the only two options. And I would like to see council take that into account and modify the proposed build. That's it. Thank you.
Thanks so much. I don't see any questions for you. Just thank you so much for participating. Clerks, do we have anybody else on the line for this item?
Speaker Forrest is now on the line.
I'm here.
Hi there. Please go ahead.
Speaker Forrest here.
Yep, go ahead, Speaker Forrest. Up to five minutes, please.
Thank you. I'm in favor of the project. Very much so, because I see the desperate need for rentals. I've lived in the area for forty-eight years. I've seen the change in commercial rates, but I've also seen the change in rentals. I'm also a landlord. And I have seen, when I advertise a place for rent, I've got thirty calls I've gotta deal with. And I've owned rental units in that area, only a couple of blocks away, going on fifteen years. And every year, I see the diversity. A lot of students coming from Mexico, a lot of students from India doing their masters, a lot of people wanting to live three and four. So there's a huge need for rental, not only in the city but in that area. So I'm very much in support, and I do think it's a supply and demand. The more supply you have, you know, guys like me are not gonna have thirty people calling because there is gonna be more rentals. I'd also like to speak to the character of the developer. Being that I've lived in this neighborhood so long, I know PAC members at General Wolf, where they're proposing to build an outdoor learning center. And the developers made a substantial donation to help that community build that outdoor learning center. They've also made a substantial donation to Sir Charles Tupper in their fitness room. They now call it the Wellness, the Health and Wellness Center, where their donation has allowed the PE department to have a full-time curriculum in that room now because of the new equipment they were able to purchase. And it's being used by students, teachers, staff, support staff. And I'd love to see more developers with character like this giving back to their community as much as they have. Not only are they supplying rental units that we are in desperate need of, they're supporting the community that they're in. And it is very hard to find people like that. So thank you. I'm very much in support. And thank you for making those contributions to the community that you're building in.
Thank you so much. I don't see any questions for you, so we'll we'll just thank you for your time tonight. Counsel, I think that's it for, clerks, that's it for speakers?
No one else on the line. Doesn't look like anyone in chambers here to speak to that item.
Great. Okay, great. Thank you very much for that. So seeing there's no additional speakers, gonna close the speakers list and close the receipt of public comments and just ask the applicant if they have any closing comments.
I know closing comments, and thank you again, Mayor and council, for your time and service to our city and for your considerations this evening.
Thanks. Staff have any closing comments?
No closing comments from staff. Thank you.
Thanks. We'll move to questions now for staff. Counselor Swanson, you're up first for five minutes.
Yeah, I understand through this question for staff that there's only two current tenants there. Is there any way staff could put conditions on this so that evicted tenants get a rent top up and a right to return at the same rent? With only two tenants, it shouldn't be a huge drain on the developers' profits.
Thanks for the question, councillor. Thank you for the question. Annie from our housing group can help respond.
So, thanks for the question. It's Annie Mobley, Senior Housing Planner. We were actually just discussing this idea as well. At this point, it's still really early days for the tenant relocation plan that we're working together with the applicant on. And you're right, there aren't that many tenants. I think just one eligible. So it is something that we can discuss with the applicant. It would be optional in this case, but it is something that we could discuss, and we do discuss as part of the development of the TRP plan as these projects move through the regulatory approvals process.
Okay, I would be into voting for this if they took care of the tenant like this.
Right, we're still asking questions here. Any other questions, councillor?
No.
Thanks. Counselor Kirby, on questions to staff?
Well, I was actually just happy to move the recommendation, but I'll wait till after councillor Diganelle West issues popped on after.
Commissioner Nova, questions to staff?
Nope, happy to move the recommendation, Mayor Stewart. Happy to move us along.
Move a seconder?
I believe I did. I moved it, but that's fine. I'll second it. Thank you, Mayor.
Thanks. We're on the main queue now. Anybody want to speak to this item? Counselor Diganelle?
I wanna speak to this item. I'm gonna speak in support, but also in saying that I understand and know the neighborhood very well. I really grew up in this neighborhood. My parents, my mom took care of my grandparents who lived on just off of Thirty Third and Main on Sophia Street, as they called it, Sophia Street. Most people call it. And my parents actually owned a little lobster shop on Twenty Fourth and Main, and I know the neighborhood really well. It's one of the places that I, my husband and I actually lived and we lived on Thirty Third and Main and were priced out of the neighborhood when we looked to to purchase a bigger home. When we had, when we were planning for our family, it was unattainable in the area. And I think that it's really important that we do look at ways to provide more family housing for people, especially in this area, and it's very near and dear to my heart. And I just shared sort of my personal story about that for those reasons. And I just shared sort of my personal story about that, uh, for those reasons. Um, but I, I am excited to see more housing, um, here. And while I understand it can be difficult, especially when we have to look at sort of the trade-offs with older rental stock, I also understand that there's a tipping point where, um, older rental stock, uh, the maintenance costs, uh, you know, it becomes too much, uh, to bear, uh, in some ways. And sort of understanding that twenty-five years is really that kind of sweet spot where you, you hit the most affordable and attainable rental. Uh, but at the same time, the maintenance costs aren't too much to bear. Um, I'm, I'm happy to support this in understanding that not only does it meet the city of Vancouver's tenant relocation policies, which I understand, uh, you know, from the reports before us that it does, but it will create more housing, um, for families in this neighbourhood, especially near an elementary school and, uh, in, in a vibrant community where there are lots of little shops and, uh, and truly has community feel, so I'll leave my comments there, but I will be supporting this, thank you.
councillor Swanson?
Yeah, I think we really have to recognise that affordability of our existing rental is precious and we desperately need to preserve that. Um, we do need new rental, I agree. But I think the least we can do is, particularly in this case when there's only two tenants, is preserve the existing affordability that we have there, require that preservation. Um, and I know that's not our current policy, but I think we're moving in that direction and I think we need to speed up our movement in that direction. And the slower we are, the more people get pushed off to the wayside. And people who are paying nine hundred for a two-bedroom end up paying twenty-five hundred or three thousand for a two-bedroom and having to move out of their neighbourhood. And it's not good for anyone when we lose this affordability, so I think we have to start requiring it. And, um, in this case, it's not very much. So I, I, I'm gonna vote against it as a protest against the not maintaining affordability for the two remaining tenants.
Thank you councillor Swanson, I don't, I don't see anybody else on the queue, and so, uh, I am gonna call a vote on this.
I'll take a vote assist in favour, please.
Thank you councillor Dominado. Thank you, uh, that has passed with councillor Swanson in opposition. Council, it is, uh, quarter after eight. I'm gonna suggest we, as we get ready for, uh, the next item, which is item number five on Stainsbury Avenue, that, uh, we just take a, uh, five minutes and stretch. We do have, uh, quite a lot of speakers for this, uh, next item, um, I believe, so, uh, yes, just take five minutes, uh, just the health break and we'll, uh, get back to you in five at, uh, eight twenty. We're just moving on to the rezoning of, uh, two oh nine Stainsbury Avenue. Just gonna check to make sure we got enough folks online here. Looking for councillor Kirby Young and Dominado to turn their screens on.
Two in chamber, Mayor.
Two in chamber, two, thank you. There we go. I think we've got one, two, three, four, five, six, seven of us. Okay, I think we're good to go here, council. Uh, just asking you if you have a conflict and a clarity on this item. Clerk, I'd like you to read the application and summary correspondence, please.
This is an application by Public Architecture and Communication to rezone two zero zero nine dash two zero three seven Stainsbury Avenue from RS dash one residential district to CD dash one comprehensive development district to permit the development of a seven-story residential building with one hundred and twenty-three social housing units. A building height of twenty-three point four metres, equivalent of seventy-six point eight feet, with additional height for rooftop amenity and floor space ratio FSR of three point five three are, are proposed. The general manager of Planning, Urban Design and Sustainability recommends approval subject to conditions set out in the summary and recommendation of the public hearing agenda. The following correspondence has been received since referral to public hearing. Twenty-five pieces of correspondence in support, fifteen pieces of correspondence in opposition, and six pieces of correspondence dealing with other aspects of the application. This represents all correspondence received up to four thirty PM today.
Thanks very much, we have, uh, speakers here and Alison Smith from the zoning centre to, uh, walk us through the presentation, um, just wait till you get all queued up and, uh, let's, uh, let's see the presentation, please.
Good evening, Mayor and council. My name is Alison Smith and I'm the rezoning planner for this social housing application being considered under the Kensington Cedar Cottage Community Vision. The site shown in red is located at the northeast corner of Stainsbury Avenue and Victoria Drive with frontages along Stainsbury Avenue, Victoria Drive, Hall Street and the Skytrain guideway to the north. It comprises five city-owned parcels and is currently occupied by the Cedar Cottage Community Garden and two detached homes. The community garden occupies both a part of the city-owned properties and the Skytrain guideway. A small portion of a community garden shed located on the Skytrain guideway encroaches onto two thousand nine Stainsbury Avenue. At the time of the rezoning application submission, there was one residential tenant on the site. This tenant was a former owner and has since vacated the property. The site is currently zoned RS one. Surrounding properties to the east are primarily zoned RS one and contain detached dwellings and low-rise apartment buildings. A number of neighbouring sites fronting onto Victoria Drive are zoned CD one and are developed with four to six-story apartment buildings. The site to the north, opposite the Skytrain guideway, is zoned CD one and is currently under construction for sixty-nine secured market rental housing units in the form of townhouses, an apartment building and a retained heritage home. This slide shows the development context of sites fronting onto Victoria Drive and the Victoria diversion and the number of stories of buildings on each site. As shown, buildings along this arterial road range from four to six stories. The property directly across Victoria Drive from the subject site is occupied by newer six-story market rental buildings. Located within eight hundred metres of several parks, bikeways and community spaces, the property is near to many amenities. The site is also well-served by transit and an IMO station within walking distance. The site is located within the Cashman area of Lord Beaconsfield Elementary School and Gladstone Secondary School. The Kensington Cedar Cottage Community Vision permits consideration of rezoning for social housing projects without further planning study. In twenty seventeen, council approved the Housing Vancouver Strategy, which sets out targets and actions to retain a diversity of households and incomes in the city. The strategy targets twelve thousand social, supportive and nonprofit cooperative units and twenty thousand purpose-built rental units. This rezoning application was submitted on December third, twenty twenty-one, representing a seven-month timeline to public hearing in keeping with the short program target timelines. The application proposes to rezone the site from RS one to CD one to permit the development of a residential building containing a hundred and twenty-three social housing units. The overall height is six stories along Stainsbury Avenue and Victoria Drive. Due to site slope, an additional lower level of units is provided at the rear of the site fronting the Skytrain guideway. This results in a seven-story massing when viewed from the Skytrain guideway and Hall Street. Staff recommend an FSR of three point five three and a building height of twenty-three point four metres. The project is estimated to contribute approximately a hundred and ninety-four construction jobs. The portion of the community garden currently occupying the subject site will have to be removed in order to allow for the development of this social housing project. The proposal includes forty-six percent family units, including two, three and four-bedroom units. The proposed form of development responds to overall project objectives including enhanced livability, building sustainability and climate resilience, while also enabling efficient modular construction. The courtyard form promotes resident interaction, passive cooling and improved solar access for many units. The application proposes indoor and outdoor amenity spaces at-grade with additional opportunities for resident gathering and interaction within the courtyard. Driveway access is proposed from Hall Street. The three parcels at two thousand nine to twenty twenty-one Stainsbury Avenue were first acquired in the nineteen seventies by the city to deliver an affordable housing project at this location. In twenty eighteen, council approved the acquisition of two additional parcels at twenty thirty-one and twenty thirty-seven Stainsbury Avenue to expand the development potential for the site. In the intervening years, the city signed a memorandum of cooperation, or an MOC, with the city of Vienna, committing to sharing knowledge and advancing innovation on the development of low-carbon affordable housing. The site was selected to be the location of a demonstration project in recognition of the MOC. Through the collaboration, both cities aim to develop a building named after its counterpart. As such, this project is named Vienna House and is pursuing passive house certification. In June of twenty twenty, More Than a Roof Housing Society was approved by council to act as a nonprofit partner to finance, build and operate the social housing building on the site. This project propose, uh, proposes to exceed the city's definition of social housing, which requires a minimum of thirty percent of units to be below housing income limit rental rates. The project has received provisional funding approval through B C Housing's Community Housing Fund, which requires the project to deliver fifty percent of units below hills rates, twenty percent of units at rent geared-to-income deep subsidy rates and thirty percent of units at market rents. The table on the slide shows the rental rate mix and the estimated rents and household income served for units within each rate category. The blue columns show the rent for the twenty percent of units categorised as rent geared-to-income deep subsidy units, intended for low-income residents on B C Housing's housing registry who received income assistance or whose income is less than the deep subsidy threshold established by the B C housing limits. The green column shows approximate rents for fifty percent of the units, which will be for residents from B C Housing's housing, B C Housing's housing registry with a blend of incomes falling between the applicable housing income limit and the deep subsidy limit. The orange column demonstrates approximate market rents for the remaining thirty percent of units. These units are intended to be rented at, out, at or below ma- the market rent for a similar unit in the community. A virtual open house was held this past January and February. Two hundred and forty-seven pieces of correspondence were received. Support was expressed for the creation of new social housing at this location, the proposed scale and design of the building and for the sustainability aspects of the project, including the pursuing of passive house certification. Respondents who supported the proposal noted that the height and density fits in with newer developments along Victoria Drive and is well-located near to the Skytrain and neighbourhood parks. Elements of the project that were supported by some residents were of concern for others. Concern was expressed for the proposed height and density in relation to the neighbourhood and for overall development pressure in the area and its impact on existing community infrastructure and facilities. Residents also expressed concern over the building design, in particular as it relates to livability for future residents. Some expressed concern over the amount of parking proposed and others were opposed to the loss of the community. Some expressed concern over the amount of parking proposed, and others were opposed to the loss of the community garden on the site. In response to concerns, staff are of the opinion that the proposed building is compatible with the existing neighborhood and is in keeping with neighboring developments on Victoria Drive. The building provides an appropriate transition from Victoria Drive towards lower-scale residential forms to the east. In terms of concerns over the form of development and livability, urban design conditions included in Appendix B of the report recommend exploring an increase in the width of the courtyard, maximizing solar access, and minimizing noise disturbance in the courtyard and for units facing the Skytrain guideway. Further enhancing the architectural expression of the building through articulation, materiality, and other design strategies is also recommended in the rezoning conditions. In relation to parking concerns, the project will be required to meet the parking bylaw. Staff acknowledge the concerns over the loss of the community garden. The Garden Society will be able, be able to continue to operate through this growing season, and city staff are working with the Garden Society to assist in securing an alternate location for the community garden for future seasons. In terms of community amenities, staff acknowledge that many of our community centers and signature programming are generally well-subscribed across the city. Staff are looking at strategies to meet demand across the portfolio, including expanding programming in existing community centers such as Trout Lake. In conclusion, this proposal can be considered under the Kensington Cedar Cottage Community Vision and advances the city's social housing targets under the Housing Vancouver Strategy. The proposal and form of development represents an appropriate urban design response to the site and context and represents a good model of sustainable affordable housing. Staff support this application, subject to the conditions contained in Appendix B. Staff and the applicant team are available to answer any questions.
Thanks very much, staff, for that presentation. Just wondering if the applicant team is here to speak to this as well. Just a reminder, the counselors, that we need your video on in order for you to be counted as present through this. If not, the clerks will mark you up sometime. Let's see, great. Getting to see this application now.
Are we all ready?
I think so. We can see your presentation. It is, could be a little bigger, but that it'll still work at this point.
Is that better?
Uh, I think so. Let's try that and see how, how it goes.
Okay. Good evening, Mayor Stewart and members of Council. It's a little bit hard with the... My name is Heather Olin and I am the Director of Non-Market Housing Development for the City of Vancouver. I'm delighted to be here this evening to introduce the proposed social housing project at two thousand and nine and two thousand and thirty-seven Stainsbury Avenue and to introduce Leanne McIllic of More Than a Roof Society, our nonprofit partner. In addition to More Than a Roof, we have also been fortunate to have as part of the applicant team CPA Development Consultants and Public Architecture and Communication. And Graham Plant and John Wall are here to answer your questions this evening. Our proposal is to develop one hundred and twenty-three homes with a mix of affordability levels, including shelter, low-income, and average-market rental rates. We would like to thank B C Housing for the preliminary development funding they have provided, which has helped bring us to this milestone, as well as their ongoing technical advice and support for the research elements of this project. In addition, we are also pleased to thank Sias and UBC for facilitating the information exchange with the City of Vienna and supporting all of the partners' efforts to share knowledge while advancing innovation in the development of affordable housing projects. This project has a number of objectives, the first of which is to provide affordable social housing for the people of Vancouver. We also have a number of environmental objectives. These include utilizing climate-resilient design strategies, constructing a near-zero emissions building, using renewable construction materials, and promoting the transfer of knowledge with the City of Vienna and with our local design and construction industries about the lessons we have learned and we will continue to learn through the design, construction, and operation of this social housing building. And as always, we work with our funders and partners to maximize the capital that will be invested in these affordable homes. For this project, we are utilizing off-site prefabrication techniques, have focused on the efficiency of the building's design, and worked hard to keep the project on schedule and on budget. Now I am very pleased to introduce Leanne McIllic, the Chief Executive Officer of the More Than a Roof Housing Society and our partner in this important social housing project.
Thank you, Heather. I'd also like to say thank you to city staff. I know that they've been working really hard to collaborate with us to move this project forward, and so thank you so much for your efforts. I appreciate it. I'd like to say good evening to Mayor Stewart and to the members of Council. As Heather's mentioned, I am Leanne McIllic. I'm privileged to serve as the Chief Executive Officer for More Than a Roof Housing Society. We are grateful and excited to have been chosen to be the future owners and operators of this awesome new development. We are in our thirty-sixth year as a social and affordable housing developer and provider in the province of British Columbia. Uh, and an interesting fact, as we started this journey as a provider in partnership with the City of Vancouver, building a courtyard community that still exists at the corner of Charles and Woodland. So we do have a longstanding history of operating this model of housing. We operate thirteen communities across the province and house over eighteen hundred people. That includes seniors, singles, families with youth and children, folks with disabilities, and healthcare-based housing solutions for those that are facing mental health and addiction recovery challenges. As you can see on the screen, our mission and our purpose is to break and interrupt cycles of poverty and homelessness for our tenants, but I would also argue it's for the surrounding communities as we look to housing-based solutions for some of the societal challenges that we have. Transformation is different, depends on the person, and it depends on the community. We believe that Vienna House is a transformational project, and we are excited to be a part of the team. We see social sustainability as a critical component of a community's well-being and longevity. So we work really hard to address quality of life within all of our communities, and that's both socially and culturally. Community development is one of our core competencies, so it's an integral focus for every project that we have in our portfolio. We believe it's really important that people are able to engage in a healthy and productive way within the communities that they call home. So we make sure that there's opportunities for people to participate in community, to bring their unique talents, expressions, bent, interests into a community space. So it's important that there's also spaces to do that. That's why we are really excited to have another courtyard community be part of our portfolio. We know that this brings a sense of ownership and a sense of belonging for the people that call these places home. When we're involved in the development and operation of a housing community, we are looking for positive impact and positive change, both for our residents and for the surrounding neighborhood. We work really hard to be good neighbors. We respect that we're coming into neighborhoods where there's well-established people and, and communities and rhythms of life, and so we're looking to enhance that. We believe that Vienna House offers positive social impact, and we know that we're addressing bigger societal issues, and we'll touch on them a bit more through this presentation. But we're talking about climate change and sustainability and affordability, among other things. But as a housing provider, we also know that there's importance with socioeconomic and social diversity, and that exists within healthy community. If you look through any neighborhood, whether it's in the City of Vancouver, across the province, or across the country, healthy communities are diverse communities. So it's important that we have mixed-income households together, learning from one another, and thriving within community together. It's been our model since nineteen eighty-six, when we partnered with the city, and it's our model today. So in support of that and building on what More Than a Roof already does well, we welcome a group, uh, we will welcome a diverse group of tenants to Vienna House. This will include seniors, singles, families with children and youth, and folks with disabilities. We call this a continuum of housing, so we are one of the few operators in the region and in the province that actually offers this, and we see Vienna House as an excellent addition to an already vibrant neighborhood. We're really looking forward to the completion of the building and to meeting our new neighbors. Thank you so much for your time, and it's my pleasure now to introduce another partner to the project, John Wall. He is Principal Architect for Public Architecture. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor and Council, and thank you, Leanne. On behalf of the consultant team, I am delighted to be here. My name is John Wall, and I'm, I'm a Principal Architect with Public Architecture and Communication. So, uh, staff has done an amazing job, uh, telling you about the project, so I'm just gonna try to focus in on a few key details. And the main thing is, how does the project respond to climate resilience? And the main way it does that is dealing with a courtyard form. So, um, what we've, there's two conditions that we wanted to address, and one of them is the noise from the Skytrain. Our acoustic consultant went out to site, did onsite measurements, and found that the noise from the Skytrain is seventy-three decibels at the building face, at the proposed building face on the north side. In the courtyard, it's modeled to be fifty-three decibels, and this is really what I want you to take away. The difference between those two numbers is the difference between a refrigerator hum, so that would be the sound you would hear in the courtyard, and a vacuum cleaner. So if you're on the north side of the building, you hear that, that really loud noise. So if you're trying to sleep at night, that's gonna be really challenging. So this is where the courtyard is really instrumental. It means that all those units that are facing the Skytrain on the north side have the possibility to open up two windows, a window on the, on the north side to the Skytrain or a window into the courtyard. And so in the evening, when you're trying to sleep, they have the ability to open up that window into the courtyard and get nighttime ventilation. And as we all remember from last year's Heat Dome Effect, we were doing our original, our original design studies during that, so heat was really top of mind for everyone involved in the project. During those hot events, you can open up that window at night and get ventilation in your unit. Now, the building also has mechanical ventilation, but in really hot days, it's really important to get nighttime flushing, to get that hot air out of your unit. And so with that, the courtyard form allows all the units to have that cross-ventilation. I think that's a really important feature. If you think about a traditional double-loaded corridor building, you just don't get that. Fifty percent of the units that are facing north do not have that cross-ventilation. So, uh, other aspects that are important are that the, the courtyard will act as a bit of an oasis, both from sound but also from heat. It does get good daylight, but it also has trees, it has plantings and shading, so that in a hot climate event, you can go down into the courtyard, you can find a cool space, and you can, you can relax and, and get out of the heat. We also have an amenity room that has a hundred percent full cooling, so that's another place that you can go to if you're a senior citizen and you need to get away from the heat. Uh, so the next slide demonstrates our daylight studies we did for the courtyard, so it shows a range of daylight conditions, both on the equinox and in the summer solstice. And I think the important thing is, and one of the great things about the site, is that it has primarily an east-west orientation. So the sun, uh, you get early morning sun will come right into the courtyard, you get good afternoon sun, and you get good evening sun. In the equinox, it doesn't get quite as deep, so we're introducing light-colored materials, so white siding, reflective glass guardrails to help reflect that light down into the courtyard so that it's a bright and cheerful space. And then the other important part of the courtyard is what Leanne's been talking about, and it's the importance of social connection. And so the other thing that a courtyard building does that a traditional single-loaded corridor building doesn't do is it increases the numbers of greetings and interactions you have on a daily basis. You leave your unit, you walk out into the corridor, and you're gonna see your neighbor, you're gonna say hello, you're gonna, you know, talk and, and get to know them, and that's really important. Leanne talked about how this is a mixed-use, diverse community. You get seniors and youth and children and all sorts of things, and people are gonna get to know their neighbors, and that's really instrumental. In the Heat Dome Effect, the people that passed away in B C, it was largely because they were living alone. They didn't have people to connect with, and they didn't have people checking on them. Having that sort of interconnectedness and having that social connection provides a layer of certainty that people are gonna be looked after, they're gonna be checked on, and they're gonna, you know, go and check their neighbor because they've got to know them through the years of living together. To make that, to make those social encounters more reliable, and I will back up and say that, you know, we did do some commuter, computer modeling that verified this, but the important part is that we're creating spaces for people to meet. The walkways are wider, we're creating shared balconies on every floor, so people can stop and have a coffee with their friends. And then the next aspect is the ground, uh, you know, like many projects, they put the social space up on the roof. We're proposing to put the social space at the courtyard level. So the courtyard is designed as a flexible, uh, social space that you can go down, you could read a book, you could read some poetry, you could have a coffee with friends, but you could also have meetings. And as depicted here in this image, you can have a large celebration, either a party or a festive event. And More Than a Roof works with volunteer organizations within their buildings to put on these kind of communal meals several times a year. So they're, they're also helping facilitate people to get to know each other. And we want to provide, as the architects, we want to provide the space for that to happen. The courtyard also happens to be adjacent to the main amenity room on the ground floor, and it tend, is also adjacent to things like, basic things like laundry, the main entry, and the kids' play space. Uh, this is a view of, of the main entry from Stainsbury, and you can see their sightlines into the courtyard, and there you can see the amenity rooms and children's play space that I just spoke about. And then finally, here's a view from the Skytrain looking back at the north side of Stainsbury, oh, sorry, not Stainsbury, the north side of the building with views to window boxes and other screening devices to provide privacy between the north units and the Skytrain. And with that, I'd like to conclude my comments, and I just thank you to Mayor and Council for your time and to staff for all their diligence with this project. It's been a real pleasure working with them. Thank you.
Thanks very much. One second, Council. Just getting a note from clerks here. Council, we only have six folks, uh, counselors on. We're dangerously close to losing quorum. If we lose quorum, uh, this meeting stops. So, um, what clerks are monitoring is best they can, but I do see seeing at least a few counselors. There we go. Right. So again, if you are gonna leave the meeting, could you let the, could you let the clerks know? That would be great. Now we're gonna proceed with questions. Uh, Counselor Boyle's up. Counselor Boyle, up to five minutes. Staff, or the applicant?
Great. Thank you so much, and thank you for this, uh, this whole presentation. I just have a few specific questions about the community garden, actually. And the first is, uh, I'm wondering, um, it, it looks, I have spent a fair amount of time at and around this particular garden, and it looks like the garden shed is just out of the way of the building. And, and my understanding is some of the garden will remain. Is the, is it possible to move the shed a bit so that it's still accessible and usable for the gardeners?
Uh, thank you, Counselor. So, um, as the, the garden shed is mainly on translink property, but partially encroaches onto the two thousand nine Stainsbury Avenue, as I mentioned in my presentation, and the Garden Society is meant to relocate the shed onto, or completely off of the, the city-owned property.
Okay, is, I imagine as a volunteer organization that will be challenging for them, is there any support to help? Um, possible to help make that happen?
So we have Caitlin from Social Policy who could probably add a better response to that. Sure, thank you.
Hi, Councils. It's Caitlin Dorrit here from Social Policy. Um, yeah, regarding the city's ability to help with moving the shed, at this time, we don't have any discretionary funding available to cover the cost. This wasn't something that was budgeted in our twenty twenty-two operating budget. And our urban agriculture infrastructure funding from the current capital plan has already been allocated, and there's no additional funding to urban agriculture in the upcoming capital plan. And there's no additional funding to urban agriculture in the upcoming capital plan. So should Council resolve that, the city should cover this cost, we need to find funding from another budget. And I'll also let the applicant speak to this if they wanna add anything.
Did the applicant want to add anything, or should I ask my next question?
The applicant has no comments.
Okay, great. My next question is, I understand it's the responsibility of the community garden to remove all the garden structures and plants. And I guess similarly wondering if, I assume the area will need to be cleared anyway for the building. If, if they're not able to fully remove and clear everything, is, are there legal risks for them in, in that agreement that they have with the city? Or, or can that be done as the site is prepared for development?
Thank you, Counselor. We have Jeff Greenberg from Legal who can respond.
Hi, Counselor Boyle. It's Jeff Greenberg, Assistant Director of Legal Services. Yes, they have a license agreement, and it provides them with the obligation at termination to remove all the improvements and to restore the land to the state in which it was previously, et cetera, at their cost. So that's an obligation that is currently provided for in the license agreement. They also have to deliver vacant possession at the time of the termination, which means they remove all their things and they return the land back to the city at termination. Hope that's helpful.
Yeah, I, I mean, I guess I'm, I'm wondering if they're not able to do that as a volunteer-run organization without a lot of resources, what do we anticipate the response would be? And I, I appreciate, we don't tend to talk about legal matters publicly, but I guess I'm, I'm wondering sort of if there's reassurance we can provide them that they're not gonna be footed with a massive legal bill because they couldn't move all the plants.
Yeah, that would require amendments to the license agreement or direction from Council in that regard.
Okay, but that's possible within the scope of the public hearing?
We generally don't take direction to amend a license agreement in the public hearing, but I think you could give direction to staff to negotiate an amendment in accordance with your intentions.
Okay. And my last question about the garden is about timing, just.
Your five minutes. So, sorry, we'll have to move on to Counselor Swanson. Counselor Swanson, up to five, please.
Yeah, I have a bunch of questions about the garden, too. So I think I heard the staff person said that, say that the garden has, has to move. Is that accurate? It has to get out of there completely? Is that what you're saying? Or can it stay on the TransLink plant?
Thank you, Counselor, for your question. So the community garden only has to move from the city-owned properties, and they can continue to operate under, on, on the TransLink properties, provided that that is in keeping with their agreement with TransLink.
And is there a way to minimize the construction impact on the garden?
Thank you, Counselor, for your question. I think I'll, I'll pass that to the applicant team.
Hi, Counselor. Grain Plant with CPA Development Consultants, and thanks for the question. As with any construction activity, it will be hard to mitigate impacts on a community garden immediately adjacent to a construction site. But it's safe to say that More Than a Roof is very able and willing to, to work to be a good neighbor with respect to the community gardens in order to minimize the impact felt by the community gardens with respect to any major sort of construction impacts that might be felt, such as dust, and obviously any sort of major deliveries or craning of materials would be communicated swiftly with the community gardens, should they continue to operate on the TransLink property, to ensure that the, there was active communication between both the community gardens and ongoing construction activities.
Okay, thanks. Another question is, I remember visiting there, I think it was during the last campaign, and there was talk of finding them another site. And now here we have more talk of finding them another site, but still, four years later, no site. So I'm wondering how that's going. Is there actually a chance of finding them another garden site?
I thank you, Counselor. I'll, I'll pass that to Caitlin, who can provide an update on that.
Thanks, Counselor Swanson. It's Caitlin Dorrit again from Social Policy. So as we outlined in a memo to Council in January twenty-twenty-two, staff have made significant efforts to work with the Garden Society over the past several years to identify an alternate site. This included initiating regular communication with the Garden Society in early twenty-eighteen to provide Vienna House project updates. And then from twenty-eighteen to twenty-twenty-one, we explored relocation opportunities on city-owned lots, including two city-owned properties on Stainsbury Avenue. Ultimately, the Garden Society didn't consider the candidate sites to be viable due to constraints, including size, geography, solar exposure, some safety concerns, and also concern that these sites, too, may, may be developed in the future. Certainly, should the Garden Society show interest in those sites in the future, staff would be available to further explore that with them, and we would subsequently report back to Council at that time should a new community garden license agreement be required. And I guess we'd wanna note that this challenge of finding a location for this garden is pretty reflective of a general trend that community demand for urban agriculture space is outpacing the city's ability to identify and secure new space. Yeah.
Thanks, thanks, thanks. I have another question. I was kind of shocked to hear you say, to hear the applicant say that there would be an air-conditioned room in the building, and that, does that imply that the whole building isn't going to be air-conditioned? Or have a heat pump or something?
Thank you, Counselor. The applicant will come and answer that.
Thank you, Counselor, for your question, and appreciate the opportunity, opportunity to provide a clarification. The, the distinction that we're making is that the building is partially cooled, and that's in keeping with the approach to passive house and the courtyard. Because the units are, have cross-ventilation, we're not doing full cooling for the building. And this has been studied by the mechanical consultants. We've done detailed thermal comfort analysis and looking forward to twenty, using twenty-fifty climate data. So the project, in the spirit of passive house, is proposing a partially cooled building with cross-ventilation. I hope that answers your question.
Last question, will it be pet.
All right, Counselor, you're, oh, friendly, yes or no? Applicant. Will the building be pet-friendly, yes or no?
Hi, Counselor Swanson. Thanks for your question. We are still deliberating as an organization, including our Board of Directors, about the pet-friendliness of Vienna House. So, yeah, we'll report back.
Okay, thanks.
Counselor Carr.
Yep, thanks, thanks so much, Mayor. I'll just continue on the, the passive cooling in the courtyard. I was just in Copenhagen where they have a lot of courtyard buildings. And I, and I still think that they had some heat pumps on, I guess, outside units. So I, I'm, I'm wanting to be sure you're not putting heat pumps in at all. It's, it's all passive cooling. Is that correct?
The mechanical system is a centralized rooftop HRV unit, which has partial cooling. So all the ventilation air that's delivered to each unit is partially cooled.
Okay, that's good. Thank you. In terms of the, the park, I'm also very interested, and I know that park, I'm sorry, the garden, community garden well. One of the, the original intents, I think, of the Garden Society was to potentially acquire a new site on the Trotlake Park. Can you tell me, staff, where conversations with the park board have gone on that?
Thank you, Counselor. I'll have Caitlin respond to that. Thank you.
Thanks, Counselor. It's Caitlin again. Yeah, so in addition to the, what I described about working with city staff, the Board of Parks and Recreation have also been in discussion with the garden. In twenty-eighteen, the society began advocating to relocate their garden into the southeast corner of John Henry Park, and in, and subsequently participated in the engagement process for the park renewal plan. In May twenty-twenty-two, the renewal plan was presented to the park board with a recommendation from staff not to include a garden in the park renewal. One of the reasons being because of a greater commitment to reconciliation and decolonization in the park planning process impacting what uses they wanted to locate in that area of the park. The board unanimously adopted the renewal plan and included a recommendation directing staff to explore the inclusion of community garden plots in the renewal plan. But whether the garden ultimately will be included is uncertain. Park board staff do expect to meet with the garden later this year to discuss this further. And in the meantime, they've also invited the Garden Society to participate in the renewal plan for nearby General Rock Park to explore potential relocation there.
Okay, thanks. I appreciate that detailed explanation. How much of the garden is on city land versus on TransLink plant? Approximately.
Caitlin again here. I don't have that up specifically. I can just pull up a map. Let's say maybe fifty percent. I'm not sure if any other staff have been joining here. I can pull up a map.
Do you happen to know if the bee colony, on which side that is? And also, there's a lot of permanent, quite well-established fruit trees and fruit bushes, some pretty incredible thornous blackberry bushes, for example. Do you know which side of the, whether it's TransLink land or city land that those more permanent features, as opposed to the annual garden plots are?
It's Caitlin again here. I'm not sure where the bees are located, but I am aware that there are quite a few trees and other perennials located on the city property, as well as some under the skytrain, kind of on the north end of the garden.
Right. Okay, that's it for me for now. Thanks for answering my questions.
Thanks so much, Counselor Carr. Counsel, I just wanted to update you on our progress tonight. We have a number of speakers for this item, and, you know, plus our open call for this, and it looks like some discussion afterwards. Then we have one last item, which is nine oh six ninety-two West Eighteenth Avenue and nine oh seven nine six nine West Nineteenth Avenue. This has a very large speakers list. And I, I think we'd be lucky to start this item. I don't think we will. So I think at this point, I'm gonna ask clerks to inform the, I think, forty-one speakers who were lined up for item six, as well as the applicant teams and others, that we won't be making it to item six this evening. And this item will come back to Council on July twenty-first. So I just wanted to let you know that, Counsel, and we'll just proceed with this item. Counselor, we have questions to staff or the applicant.
Yeah, I'll just follow up. The indigenous species, the fruit trees that Cease Weiss has been involved in, has there been an opportunity by the proponent to include those as part of the landscaping plan?
Thank you, Counselor, for your question. Those are property of the, the Garden Society. Therefore, we have not asked the applicant to include those as part of their landscape to provide the garden with an opportunity to transplant those if they wish.
Okay, it'd just be nice to bring Cease in there to do kind of indigenous grounding outside the project, kind of integrate it, so it might be an opportunity for the proponent moving forward. The second one, recognizing that they're not really talking about a house, there's a lot of talk about community. I'm wondering, the eight-unit apartment building that's just beside it is still for sale for a very reasonable price. I'm wondering, is that something we've looked at as a city, to incorporate more city-owned housing and have this amazing society bring that into the community and continue to expand outside that building? Because I think it's really important, if we have such an amazing operator, to look at other buildings to be able to incorporate and broaden the community.
Thank you, Counselor. I'll pass this to Heather with Non-Market Housing.
Thank you, Counselor, for your question. I'm Heather Oland with Non-Market Housing. So I, I'm gonna have to refer back with, with Real Estate Services. I recall that there was potentially some discussion around that law. I can't remember exactly what the implications were, but I, we would be happy to get back to you on that.
Okay, I just, the price, it's reasonably priced, and it's. Yeah, other than that, I think it's a really interesting building. Thank you.
Counselor Weave. Next up is Counselor Dominado, up to five.
Thanks, Mayor. And my question would be, is either for Heather or for More Than a Roof Housing Society, and maybe it's more for the society. I'm curious, in looking at this application, and I really appreciate your presentation, the detail you provided, if you could comment on how we arrived at what I see as a successful model? And so I guess getting at what's the secret sauce and achieving this? And I, I don't feel we see this very often, Counsel, these type of applications. So I was hoping the, the service provider/operator could comment on their perspective.
Hi, I'm sorry, I missed your name, but I'd like to say thank you.
It's Counselor Dominado. Thanks.
Thanks, Counselor Dominado. Thanks for your question. This has been a very collaborative team effort. It's something that's actually new for us, being invited so early on into the process to talk about design and the people that are gonna call this community home. And we're also basing tenant and unit mix on B.C. Housing's model. This was a request for proposal through B.C. Housing, and so we followed the model of the Community Housing Fund and what they asked of us. So, so far, it's just been super collaborative in, in getting us to this place.
And before you go away, I'm hoping I could ask one more question. Is, I appreciate that, and, and expanding on the, the benefits of collaboration. Can you comment on the affordability aspect of this? Again, not seeing this very often in some of our proposals that come to Council.
Yeah, so again, just harkening back to the presentation. So we have twenty percent of what we refer to as, as deeper need that require deeper amounts of subsidy. We have thirty percent of the building that's rent geared to income. And then we have, or fifty percent, pardon me, and then thirty percent of what's referred to as market housing. So for us, market is a word. We are a nonprofit housing provider. We are not here to make profit off of the rents in the building. And so we look to provide as much affordability across the entire community as we can based on balancing the revenues that we bring in and, and offsetting the expenses of, of operating and running the building.
And that, that's great. And can you remind me, is CMHC part of this, is federal government involved in funding?
Thanks for the question, Counselor Dominado. We'll be pursuing CMHC's co-investment fund. CMHC recently split their co-investment fund up into two separate application streams. One is a loan, which also provides a non-repayable portion, and the other is contribution-only. So as of now, we're considering the contribution-only stream, but they only accept applications for projects that are within six months of construction. So we can't quite submit an application, but we fully intend on submitting one.
Okay, I appreciate that. And noting that we have several speakers to this, I'll, I'll pause my questions there. Thank you.
Thanks. That's it for questions from Council to the applicant. We can ask questions to staff later, after we hear from speakers. Counsel, now we're gonna go to our speakers list. Sorry, I've closed that down. I'll just open that up now. Okay. Okay, so we've got speaker number one on item five is Celia Wong. Speaker number one, Celia Wong.
Hi there. Can you hear me?
Sure can. Up to five minutes whenever you're ready.
Okay. Hello, Mayor and Councilors. This is my first time speaking at a public hearing. Thank you so much for allowing me some time to share my concerns. I, I am a Vancouverite, born in DGH. I'm a condo owner. I live in Cedar Cottage. And I helped build the local community garden, sitting right under the skytrain, directly below this proposed redevelopment site. So I have an invested interest in the community garden, and I live in the neighborhood. There's been a significant development in this neighborhood of Eighteenth and Commercial Drive. I live on Commercial Street. It's a little area where a lot of, there's been redevelopment. New buildings, old buildings. The building I live in is over fifteen years old, so I'm not in a new building. But being here for so long, I, we have a large space in comparison to some of the other units, the newer buildings in the area, so that's a blessing. Anyways, I believe, I'm one of the only people that, according to the list, supported the, this proposal. And somebody told me that I shouldn't say I support it because I have a lot of concerns about the development. It's not perfect, but I believe that we need more social housing, and we need more affordability. And we need to have more livability, because when I talk to people, they say that, you know, these are people that are living out of Surrey or other places. They have to commute in, and they can't afford to buy, and they, they're young people. They can't afford to live in the neighborhood. So I guess they're not earning enough money. But, you know, anyways. So I looked at the proposal, and, so I'm a little nervous, anyways. So, under the affordability component of the proposal, it says twenty percent will be deep subsidy. So then I looked up what the definition of social housing is. So it says that social housing needs to be thirty percent. So I don't understand why it's not written out that thirty percent should be under the deep subsidy rates umbrella. And then that would, then I would hope reduce the number of market rate rentals available. So then you would have eighty percent, no, thirty and fifty, eighty percent that would be under the umbrella of social housing, and only twenty percent at market rate. Because I live in the neighborhood, there's all this development, there are a lot of rentals, they're vacant, they're new. And I understand that because it's new, you can charge more, because it's a new rental. So, so the idea that on Main Street, because I've been listening, that there is no rentals at, in the neighborhood, it's because the cost is too high. It's not affordable. Anyways. So my other concern is livability. Sorry. So I looked at the design. It seems like it's very close to the Skytrain. I helped build the garden. I know how noisy it is. I listened to the fellow talk about the noise level. Well, we've had events in that, in the plaza, which is under the Skytrain, and it's very noisy. Anyways, so livability, the noise, the size, the scale, I don't necessarily agree with. But we need more affordable housing. So, yeah. What other comments do I want to make here? So it's being funded by thirty-two point eight million dollars of taxpayers' money. So, so why can't they reduce the number of market rate rentals? That, because it's already being subsidized, and from what I'm hearing, they're also going to be applying for CMHC. So, what else?
Thank you very much, speaker. That's your time, five minutes. Really appreciate you calling in tonight. And I will move to the next speaker, but do appreciate you participating. I'm going to move on to speaker number two, who is Andrew Walker, who I believe is in person.
Mayor, councillors, staff, my name is Andrew Walker. I'm a Vancouver resident and a director at Cedar Cottage Community Garden. A greater part of our garden is currently located on city land, which, following your support of this rezoning application tonight, will become a seven-story development. Our garden was started in 2008 by a group of organizations, including the Vancouver Native Health Society, which signed the original lease agreement prior to our becoming a nonprofit society. Two years later, in 2010, we expanded onto city land at the invitation of the city, because, as stated in the lease agreement, and I quote, "The city believes that community gardens and other similar forms of urban agricultural activities can have positive social, educational and environmental impacts on local communities and neighborhoods." In April 2018, the Vancouver Affordable Housing Agency, Vaha, was given control of a portion of the eventual development site, during which councillors unanimously voted that, again, I quote, "Staff work with the Cedar Cottage Community Garden Society to ensure that the future siting of garden activities is addressed." In June 2019, the proposed development site was expanded to include another two lots. Again, council voted unanimously, and again, I quote, "The councils support the continuation of over a decade of community building and gardening, as well as meeting the growing demand for community gardening in this area, by directing Vaha and city staff to continue to work with the Cedar Cottage Garden Society to identify a new site in a nearby area to ensure the continuation of the garden activities," end quote. Since then, another three years have passed, and our garden is facing imminent development. Despite our four-year effort to see the creation of a community garden within Trout Lake Park, none was included as part of the recently released renewal plan for the park. As a society, we made an early decision to support this development, as it was felt that affordable housing trumped the opportunity to garden. But despite the city's own stated beliefs and the clear direction of council, there has been no apparent good faith effort on the part of the city to secure a new location for our activities. The lots along Stainsbury offered by the city in 2018, and referred to as an answer to an earlier question, were recently taken off the table as there are imminent development possibilities. And so we are left only with the option to garden on what will be left of our current location, under the Skytrain tracks, much reduced in area, with a seven-story development looming over us and between us and the sun. We are unsure if this will be viable for gardening in the long term, but are willing to make the effort. In the rezoning referral report before you tonight, I would like to draw your attention to the claim that, and I quote, "No significant public spaces are impacted by the shadows from this proposed development." You beg to disagree. In addition, the report expands more lines of text on the importance of preserving the Vancouver Heritage Foundation plaque attached to our garden shed than it does to the importance of preserving the garden shed or even the garden itself. Quoting from the Vancouver Heritage Foundation's website, "The garden shed, which displays the Places That Matter plaque, was built within twenty feet of the original Lakeview Station. It is a three-quarter scale replica of the building that stood there from approximately nineteen hundred to nineteen thirty-five," end quote. And the plaque itself commemorates the death of fourteen individuals who were riding on the tram line. At this point, we are asking of council only that Vaha is directed to work with us in good faith to ensure we are afforded every opportunity to make this continued endeavor a success. And further details on this request will be presented by a later speaker and current chair of our garden society. And thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. I don't see any questions for you, so I am going to move to speaker three, who is Michelle Philippe.
Hello.
Hi there.
Hi. My five minutes will be taken up with a video, which has been sent, and hopefully it works. I'll just introduce it very quickly. My, like you said, I'm Michelle Philippe. I'm former president of the community garden, that is the topic here, and a current board member. The video that you're going to see is created by Devon Cook, who's a Vancouver documentary filmmaker, currently focusing on forms of food production. And the request to accept a community garden in John Henry Park, as has been said, remains undecided. And then speaker after me will be addressing that a little further. So we'll start the video now, please.
My poem is called "Oh, Artichoke." "Oh, how the artichoke sprouts through spring rains full of bountiful promise. What will this season contrive for our ravenous souls?"
Cast into the limelight at each summer's glory, the artichoke bears its fruit and tells its formidable story.
Cedar Cottage Community Garden is a place where people come together to grow fruits and veggies and flowers. And for me, it's definitely a place I come to learn.
The vision of the garden sort of developed bit by bit. Some people were very interested in just being able to garden. People were able to exercise their creativity, create a safer spot in the community, and have a place where people could come together and socialize. And I don't know that people really thought about aesthetics much, but we really developed that. I think it's developed into a beautiful place as well. It's very satisfying to look around the garden and see, we have created this. And everybody who comes to the garden and does their little bit is part of that.
These are radishes. We've got some peas, shard beets, which are just starting to come up. I can see them now, and carrots. And the kale doesn't seem to be sprouting yet, so we'll see how that one goes. But, yeah, you can kind of see the radishes are starting to come up a little bit.
I tend to grow a lot of greens. I grow what we eat.
I planted some mixed greens, and they came beautifully. But my next plantings haven't come up yet, so I'm not sure if they're going to.
When I relocated back to Vancouver a few years ago, a big consideration for me where I lived was, where can I garden?
I live in an apartment, so I don't really have a lot of access to garden anywhere.
We just got this garden plot and then heard the news.
The city told us last year that they were going to take back the land we're gardening on.
The city is taking it back for affordable and social housing.
Every inch here will be the affordable housing development.
I'm really heartbroken, to be honest, that it's not staying here. But given that the city is redeveloping, I want to make sure that what started here is preserved.
But there are lots of people who are working really hard to make sure that we get relocated, you know, within the neighborhood as opposed to completely eradicated.
I'm really happy that there's a big movement to try to get a plot at Trout Lake. I would actually love that.
It's close, so we would attract the same people that we are currently. It's large. It has room for a community garden, and it's not something that it currently has. Trout Lake Park is the shared backyard of the neighborhood. And one of the most common things to do in your backyard is gardening. So what we want to do is to recreate the community garden. We have just a few hundred meters away on this monocultural lawn that you can see in front of you. We want to create a place of beauty and biodiversity, a place that the entire neighborhood and the city can come and enjoy. So it would not only be community plots for the members, it would be things like trellis walkways with grapes and kiwis, an orchard, soft fruit berries, lavender beds, a pollinator garden to support the native bees, a place that people can come and garden.
We need the approval of the Parks Board of Vancouver in order to build a garden here.
I would really love to keep this garden here, if there's any chance at all. And if not, I want to help the folks here relocate to John Henry Park, where I think they want to be.
This fabulous affair behind us, the spring fling, which we have every year for the last eight years, is a demonstration of why this garden is so important and why this garden needs to move to relocate to a more permanent location in the John Henry Park, Trout Lake Park.
Thank you so much for that. Appreciate your time today. That, I'm going to go to the next speaker now. As we're at the end of the five minutes. Next speaker is Casimir Kish, speaker number four.
Yes, I'm here. Am I commenting all right?
Yes, you can. Yes, we can hear you.
Hello?
Hi, we can hear you. Please go ahead.
Yep, I'm here.
Yep, please go ahead. Speaker, go ahead. We can hear you. Speaker, you need to turn off your livestream.
Hello?
Hi there. You need to turn off your livestream.
Hello?
Councillor, perhaps, or clerks, perhaps we can move to the next speaker, and he can help for those, those speakers. Maybe the operator can help them. Let's move to speaker number five, Grace McKenzie. Hi, it's Grace McKenzie there, please. Speaker number five. Hello?
Yeah, hello, I can hear you speaking.
Yep, Grace McKenzie, please go ahead. Speaker number five. Grace McKenzie, speaker number five. Clerks, we might move to speaker number six then, Alex Halboom.
Hello, can you hear me?
Hi, is this Alex Halboom? Hi, is this Alex Halboom? Okay, councillor, we're going to take two seconds and sort this out. We'll be right back.
Good evening. This is the meeting coordinator from the council chamber. Are you able to hear us on the telesline?
Hey, council chamber, so you can hear me, but I can't hear anything from you. Is that correct?
Are you talking to me, Grace?
No, sorry, Grace. I'm talking to council chamber. I'm going to mute you.
Okay, what I'm going to do is I'm going to hang up and I'll call back.
Okay, we can't hear you. Council chamber, not you, Grace. Council chamber, not you, Grace.
Good evening, this is the meeting coordinator calling from the ch- council chamber. I have dialed back in. Are you able to hear me now? The tellus line is unmuted. If we can do a sound check, that would be great.
Okay, can you hear me now?
Yes, we can hear you, but are you able to hear us?
Perfectly. Okay, and let's go back with speaker four, because he's back on the line.
Okay, thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, counsel, if I can get you to, uh, put your cameras back on. And I, I believe we have speaker number four on the line now. I think we've got our tech difficulties worked out. Uh, Casimir Kish?
This is Casimir. Am I coming through?
You are. Up to five minutes, please.
Oh, okay, thank you. It's been a long road to get here through the, uh, the calls back and forth, but here I am. Thank you, um, everyone. I, um, just want to, um, add a few things. I'll, I'll keep it, um, short here because I know, uh, time is short. Uh, I do live in the area, Cedar Cottage area, for the last fourteen years. I had looked at this project in depth, um, through the, um, applicant supplied materials. I do find that, uh, this project is a integrated area, close to great transit options and shopping. Um, excellent proximity to Trout Lake, which I think is one of the, the best parks in the city. Um, Skytrain nearby, uh, elementary high schools also nearby. Very convenient, I think, for the families that will occupy those two, three, and four bedroom units. Um, I really liked the design of the building with the, um, the big courtyard in the middle. I think that's going to absolutely increase options for neighbors to interact and, um, present, um, m- many more opportunities for, uh, for social situations to occur, um, naturally. We live in a, uh, in a condo not too far from this site where, um, about fifteen years old, the condo lacks, um, all of these things, the courtyard and just places for people to meet and to, um, to hang out and to see each other without, um, any intention specifically of doing that. Um, so I think that the larger units of the building, uh, which are quite rare now in Vancouver, will be a great addition to the neighborhood. And, um, in summary, I think these one hundred and twenty-three homes, which provide, uh, options at different levels for, um, different groups of people, uh, will be a great addition to the area. I have, I don't live, um, within a block or two of this site, but I know several people that, that do. And, um, I've spent lots of time around this area and I, I mean, conversations, I know they're welcoming. They'll be happy to welcome, uh, people to these new homes once they are complete. Um, so yeah, just to say, the design looks really good, the amount of light looks good, courtyard, um, and, um, those, I guess those are my, my thoughts. Thank you.
Thank you for, uh, your time tonight. I don't see any, uh, I don't see any questions for you, so, um, I am going to move to the next speaker, who I believe is, uh, Grace McKenzie, speaker number five.
Hi, can you hear me?
Sure can. Up to five minutes, please.
Okay, hi. Hi, my name is Grace McKenzie, and my family has owned the same property in Cedar Cottage for eighty years. We're a few blocks from the project. I'm opposed to the project as it stands. I want to see nice homes built here for tenants. The form, there should be one six-story, four, two-point-four-zero FSR, one-hundred-and-one unit building here. This was the original proposed in the May twenty-eleve- uh, twenty-twenty-one bid. You've received two links from, uh, for these bids through correspondence from our residents association, the Cedar Cottage area neighbors. The current proposal is warehousing people. Staff changed the propos- the project to two-seven-story, three-point-four-six FSR, one-hundred-and-twenty-three unit building in order to maximize the amount of affordable housing being delivered on public land. The building should be placed further from the Skytrain line and closer to Victoria Drive. It should have large mature trees planted between the Skytrain line and the building to dampen the noise of the Skytrain. It should have an, it should have the interior courtyard removed because the Skytrain noise will reverberate in the courtyard and make it unusable. The use, there should be no market rentals in this project. Public money is being used to create this project, therefore it should be one hundred percent social housing consisting of all hills units. That's what we need in our community. The city's zoning and development bylaw defines social housing as hills or shelter rate. The rents should be no more than a studio, nine-hundred-and-fifty, one-bedroom, one-thousand-two-hundred, two-bedroom, one-thousand-six-hundred, and a three-bedroom or larger, two-thousand a month. These rents are from the city's rental incentive programs bulletin, last updated February twenty-twenty-two. This area does not need more market rentals because the new market rental buildings built over the last five to ten years still sit vacant. They have vacancy signs up for one, two, and three-bedroom units every month since they were built. This area does not need more shelter rate units. Within one, within ten blocks, within a ten-block radius of this project, we have two-hundred-and-eighteen new shelter rate units. In summary, make this project a nice place to live and not a warehouse for people. Send us back to staff to change this project to make it, uh, it nice for the tenants and not a place to maximize the number of units you can squeeze onto a lot. To do that, build one six-story building and remove the building away from the Skytrain and closer to Victoria Drive, plant mature trees between the building and Skytrain, reduce the density, reduce the height, and get rid of the interior courtyard because it will just be a place for the Skytrain noise to reverberate. Listen to what the community has suggested for this project. I hope you've read the email I sent you through the public hearing form. It has a list of the community's concerns regarding the project. Please do the right thing here. Build for the tenants, not for density. I have a little bit more time. One more point that concerns me. This proposed building height is actually eight stories tall. The staff report calls this a seven-story building, but it will have an amenity space on the roof that staff don't include in the calculations on height. So in the end, this building will be eight stories tall. This is the same height as the Lee Building at Main and Broadway and next to single detached homes. Please take this excessive height into consideration. This will shadow sidewalks and roads around this project. Thanks for listening.
Thank you for your time tonight. I don't see any questions for you, so we'll move to the, uh, next speaker. Uh, counsel, it's Alex Halboom, speaker number six.
Hi, everyone. Um, hi, can you hear me?
We can, yep. Go ahead, please.
Uh, perfect. I see my slides are just going up, so I'm gonna get started. Thanks so much, uh, for the opportunity to speak today. I just wanted to provide a little bit of context for Cedar Cottage Community Garden, um, and talk a bit about the important role that it plays, uh, in the Cedar Cottage neighborhood. Um, all the photos in this presentation are available publicly on our website. So just a quick bit of history, our garden was created in two thousand and eight through extensive collaboration, uh, between community members and organizations. Um, some key partners, uh, include the Vancouver Native Health Society, the Vancouver Community Agriculture Network, and the Cedar Cottage Food Network. Uh, we've also worked with groups including Urban Native Youth Association, Environmental Youth Alliance, and Farm Folk City Folk. Next slide, please. Um, today, our garden continues to collaborate with community organizations and urban indigenous members. So these photos include, um, Lee Swift, one of our founders, at our tenth anniversary in twenty-eighteen, Lori Snyder teaching on Indigenous plants, uh, at our twenty-nineteen Spring Fling, and Leona Brown speaking at our twenty-nineteen Community Harvest Dinner. Next slide. Uh, one of our founding principles is to pass on the gift of our garden. So our meal program, um, started in two thousand and nine. Our garden members volunteer to grow and donate fresh organic local produce to the Cedar Cottage neighborhood house. And in the past three years alone, we've donated over nine-hundred pounds, uh, of food. Next slide. Um, our garden strives to be a green space for community gathering and celebration. One example is our annual spring fling. That includes a plant sale, garden tour, workshops on music, really popular with our members, but also local residents in the community. Next slide. Uh, we also host harvest dinners. We've hosted formal long table dinners and casual potlucks to share the bounty of our garden and celebrate community connections. Um, this gives a meaningful opportunity for us to give back to our neighbors and to share. Next slide. Uh, one thing I love about the garden are many ways we build community informally through, uh, attending to garden tasks together at work parties, uh, workshops, and, uh, sharing our amazing communal crops. I've learned to be a better gardener, but mostly I've really felt welcomed and been able to build relationships with other, um, garden members that have been really meaningful. Uh, next slide. We have over a hundred family plots that express the personal and cultural identities of our members. Um, and our garden has a hugely diverse range of plants. We also have a medicinal garden, many native trees, uh, and shrubs, and orchards, and herb garden, and pollinator species. So the, uh, environment is also very biodiverse and important for wildlife. Next slide. Um, the strong community support for our garden has been demonstrated through the Parks Board's renewal process for Trout Lake. So our garden received over fifty-six letters and seven hundred signatures supporting the continuation of our community garden in Trout Lake. Um, these letters came not just from our members, but a huge range of community groups that we work with. And next slide. Uh, this slide shows the results of public consultation on an early draft of the Trout Lake renewal plan. Um, you can see the strong value that the community places on having a community garden. Um, despite this, as mentioned, later drafts of the Trout Lake plan, uh, removed the community garden. Um, and in May, the Parks Board did vote on a final Trout Lake plan that didn't include a garden. The week before this meeting, Parks Board received a hundred and seventy messages in support of a community garden in the park. And as a result, Parks Board has again directed staff to explore inclusion of community garden plots in, uh, Trout Lake. We're hopeful this could allow our garden to continue, but it'll be several years before anything materializes, if at all. So I hope that you can see how incredibly valued our garden is to the Cedar Coll- Cottage neighborhood, uh, and how important it is that we're able to continue community gardening effectively this year, um, as well as into the future. Thanks very much.
Thank you. Uh, councillor Swanson, you've got questions?
Yeah, I was just gonna ask, um, what, what's the next step for the Park Board? Do you, do you know? You said it would take several years for them to come up with anything? Why would it take so long? She says having, the city having spent several years.
That's a great question. Uh, my understanding is that the, the, the directive was for the Parks Board to, um, staff to explore inclusion of community garden plots, uh, in Trout Lake. Um, it's possible some of the other members of the garden can, can speak to the overall process, um, of working with Parks Board on the Trout Lake plan, um, more, more eloquently than me. But I think, um, that's kind of a stage we had been at, you know, four years ago. Um, and, and that was nixed for whatever reason, and, um, I'm not sure, maybe Andrew or Iman could, could speak to that question a bit better, team, yeah.
Okay, thank you, dear.
Thanks so much. Uh, that's it for, uh, questions for you. Appreciate you, uh, calling in. Uh, we're gonna go to our next speaker, who's Nathan Davidovich. Speaker number seven, Nathan Davidovich. Speaker number seven, Nathan Davidovich. Hey clerks, I don't hear, uh, Nathan Davidovich, so, um, as we're at the end of the public list, I am going to make a call, my first call.
Sorry, sorry, mayor, to interrupt. There's one more on the next page.
Oh, I'm sorry about that. Uh, speaker number eight, uh, uh, Yimen Jang? Yes, speaker number eight, Yimen Jang. Okay, clerks, I, I don't hear Nathan Davidovich or Yimen Jang, so I am now gonna call.
What do you mean you don't hear me? I'm, I'm on the line.
Great, okay, you have a, yeah, you're ready to go. Up to five minutes, Nathan Davidovich. Please go ahead.
Yeah, thank you very much. Sorry for all your technical difficulties. Uh, I think you know who to blame for that. Um, uh, we have to go back, uh, forty years to know what happened. Unfortunately, the old city hall staff have retired and they didn't write the history of the work. What was promised and designed forty years ago was an additional Skytrain station between the Broadway and Commercial Station and the Denaimo and Twenty-Fourth Avenue Station. The Toronto engineer that built Skytrain is still alive. He lives in South Falls Creek, and he con- he can confirm to our new city hall staff that, that a new station can be built on the Victoria diversion with all, um, uh, we, I mean, we need it more now, of course, than back in the, in the eighties because we have a whole bunch of new buildings all around. The Trout Lake Community Center is expanding. The, the Cedar Cottage Neighborhood House, Gladstone School. So a new station is definitely, uh, needed and be well-used. Uh, the city should have copied the city of Richmond capstone station model of financing. Uh, the, the number twenty Victoria bus is the number one north-south bus route in ridership in Vancouver for over ten years. This bus has cutbacks in twenty-twenty, twenty-one, and twenty-two. With all the new buildings in the area, we need to increase the bus service, not cut it. This is another example of how TransLink staff and city staff keep saying that we need higher mode split for transit, but when it comes to actions, very little is done.
Can we, uh, just focus on a particular project, please?
Yeah, well, that's the bus service that serves the project. Any new Any new improvements to bus service are not planned till twenty-twenty-five, twenty-six. According to Transport twenty-fifty, which is a bad transport plan.
Speaker, I, I'm gonna have to.
Compared to other big metro areas in Canada.
I'm just gonna stop you there, speaker, just one second. Clerks have informed me that we have lost quorum. So I think we're done. Thanks, counsel. We're gonna have to pick this up on July twenty-first at six P M.
What kind of a joke is that?
I don't know. Thanks so much.
Well, you may, Mr. Mayor, yeah, you, you have a bad counsel, Mr. Mayor. Maybe you can get a new counsel after the election, you know?
Could you please mute the speaker? Counsel, we have lost quorum, so we're done, we'll be back July twenty-first. Thanks so much. Thanks, clerks.